We are back in open session. Chancellor Burke will provide a welcoming greeting.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Zoom board meeting of the South Orange County Community College District. Thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. Starting with tonight's meeting, we have trustees Marcia Milcher, Tim Jamal, Terry Witt, Riddell, Barbara J., Carolyn Inman, TJ Prendergast, and James Wright joining us in person. Student trustee Satar Mateen will be joining us, joining the meeting via Zoom after her class ends at 7:30 PM. We welcome members of our district community who are participating virtually and members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via Zoom webinar. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted. Following the meeting, the district will make the recording available on the SOCCCD website. The audio of this meeting is being closed captioned in real time. The board is open to receiving public comments. The published agenda requested for public comments to be submitted in advance of the meeting by email. Public comments will be read aloud at the appropriate time during the meeting. I would now like to turn the meeting over to trustee Milcher, who will call the meeting to order.
The August 23rd, 2021 meeting of the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953 and Governor Newsom's executive orders N 2920 and N 3520. I welcome back the trustees who are attending in person for the first time since February 2020. Staff and members of the public are attending the meeting virtually via Zoom webinar. Are there any actions taken in closed sessions to be reported out?
There were no, oh, sorry.
No, there were no actions taken. Okay, thank you. And now we will have an invocation led by trustee Tim Jamal, followed by a pledge of allegiance led by myself.
Thank you for that. Wow, fall semester. Can't believe it's upon us. What an exciting time for all of us here, our students, our faculty, our staff, and everyone. It's been a long time. It just so happens that our first day back coincides with the first day of school.
Yeah.
So it's pretty amazing time. And I think it reminds us what a special place this is. We have two fabulous colleges, I think the best district in the state of California. And I just want to thank everyone. It's been a long haul, the last year and a half, and thank all of you in the room, faculty, staff, everyone who's been part of this process. And we're not through it yet. But in fact, I think we're taking a little bit of a dip. But we will get there. And it's just, it's just a joy to be back here. The challenges remain with COVID-19. We're aware, all of us, of what's going on with infections and risk of infections. And I think it's clear to me that we do need some additional leadership on this issue. And I think there's a lot of challenges, but we're going to have to address them, including the issue of vaccine mandates, testing. These are things that I think cannot escape us any longer. And they're issues that we're going to have to address as a district going forward. And I think we have the board to do it, and I think we have the leadership to do it. So it's a joy to be back here on campus. You know, I'm so grateful to be here. I know my colleagues are grateful to be here. And let's get on with the meeting. So thank you.
Thank you. And now we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I now ask the chancellor to read aloud any public comments received via email. If a member of the public has submitted a written comment and has requested to speak, their name will be called and they will be unmuted and allowed to speak. A two-minute time limit will be observed. Please note, all email correspondence related to this meeting will become part of the board's minutes.
So we have 13 public comments. Hi, my name is Virginia Shank. I'm a full-time faculty member at IVC. I appreciate how closely the chancellor and board have worked with the Faculty Association to try and keep us all safe during the pandemic. I am grateful that even reduced enrollment did not push us to sacrifice the safety of our community in favor of attracting more students. However, it's clear that we need more. Incentives are not enough. If we want to return to some kind of normal, we need a vaccine mandate for all SOCCCD community members from faculty and staff to students. We are in the business of education. And as everyone who has worked in the classroom knows, firm and reasonable expectations make education possible. A vaccine mandate is a firm and reasonable expectation in the face of science denial and rampant variants. Please help us make South Orange County Community College District safe for everyone and mandate vaccination for in-person education. Thank you. Next, from Lisa Alvarez. I so appreciate all the efforts of the past one and a half academic years that have kept students and staff of the South Orange County Community College District safe during the initial onset of this pandemic. I am impressed by the resilience of teaching faculty, staff, and students to adapt so that students can continue to make progress for their goals. We've learned how to meet the needs of students in an online environment, supported by the well-deployed higher education emergency relief funds and COVID-19 response block grants. But we have also learned, as we all know, that many of our students cannot and do not wish to learn online. They are dropping out, they are failing. This fall, many are not registering at all. And it's clear that the virus is resilient too and can adapt. While the incentives offered to increase voluntary vaccinations have been somewhat effective, like mask wearing and social distancing, in the face of developing variants, these measures are not enough. As Dr. Anita Sircar wrote this week in the LA Times, "The burden of this pandemic now rests on the shoulders of the unvaccinated, of those who are eligible to get vaccinated but choose not to. A decision they defend by declaring vaccination is a deeply personal choice. But perhaps never in history has anyone's personal choice affected the world as a whole as it does right now. When hundreds and thousands of people continue to die, when the most vulnerable members of our society, our children, cannot be vaccinated, the luxury of choice ceases to exist." Sircar is a physician at a little company of Mary Hospital in Torrance and a clinical instructor at UCLA. She is using all her powers to address a crisis that will not just go away on its own. Last week, the ASIVC used their powers to encourage the board to take action to implement a vaccine mandate. It was one of the first actions the students took this year. I'm so proud of them. Please use your power tonight and do the right thing. Take action to mandate vaccine requirements for spring 2021. Hi, hello, my name is Naveed Sadi. I am an incoming freshman at IVC who is planning to major in computer science. I am making this public comment to ask for a vaccine mandate for all staff members and students at SOCCCD. I know from experience that I and many other students have had extreme difficulty learning things during this past year and a half. We have had trouble absorbing the information that is being taught in class. I also know that myself and many other students will miss out on normal college life if things continue like this. That is why we are asking for all staff and students at both IVC and Saddleback to be vaccinated through a vaccine mandate. With a vaccine mandate, we can return to campus and with that sense, and with that, a sense of normalcy. Many universities and colleges around the nation have already implemented a vaccine mandate, including our very own UC and CSU systems, and so some fellow community college districts. There is no reason why we can't be part of this growing trend. When these schools implemented a vaccine mandate, they effectively allowed their students to return to campus full-time, where they could learn how, learn how they used to. These students now have an advantage over us as they are receiving a better education. There is no reason for us to be receiving an inferior education. This would be especially damaging to us when it comes to time to transfer to a four-year university, as other students have received superior education. Hello, my name is Nicholas Wee. I am a second year at Irvine Valley College, and I am majoring in public health sciences. I am here today to support the vaccine mandate for students and staff members attending SOCCCD. In this past year, Irvine Valley College has kept its classes online and its students at home. Given the circumstances, I completely understand and support this policy. But in recent months, the vaccine has become widespread and available to the public, but many people receiving their first, second, and some even their third dose. As a student majoring in public health, participating in a public health research association, and assisting in distributing and administering the vaccine, I support the vaccine mandate. Mandating the vaccine would allow students to return to campus, which I believe is the biggest benefit of this decision. Not only does this provide students a more efficient and effective method of learning as compared to online learning, provide students an opportunity to meet and socialize with other students and their professors, which I believe is one of the most important experiences in attending college and schools. In conclusion, I believe that the benefits of a vaccine mandate outweigh the costs. Therefore, I support the vaccine mandate, and I encourage others to do the same. Thank you for hearing me out. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to voice our concerns. I hope this finds you well. My name is Talak Khan, and I'm a second-year student attending at Irvine Valley College, majoring in public health sciences. I present this public statement to support the vaccine mandate for students and staff members of SOCCCD. These past few months have proven to be imperative, as the rise of vaccines has led to a significant drop in coronavirus cases and will continue to drop the continuous reinforcement. For almost a year, Irvine Valley College has kept its classes online and its students at home. But with most places opening up again, colleges should be able to welcome in-person courses once more. As an avid public health enthusiast, I understand firsthand the challenges seen through enforcing these policies. I am the president of a public health research association that works to educate the community about the benefits of vaccines and numerous other epidemiological challenges that can be faced if we don't adopt these practices within our lives. Beyond my own initiatives, there are students who at SOCCCD who are doing similar things like myself, hoping that, as a community, we can work together to come back to school without compromising our health. All things said, I stand behind the vaccine mandate and hope that the SOCCCD board will favor this, so that students can receive the educational experience they deserve. Hello, my name is Kelly Q. I am a second-year student attending Irvine Valley College. I present this public statement to support the vaccine mandate for students and staff members of SOCCCD. Coronavirus has swept cities worldwide, leaving us in lockdown for almost a year. Despite these challenges, the efforts toward having everybody vaccinated has led to a significant drop in the COVID-19 cases and the opening of many colleges and public places. There is no reason for us to stay in lockdown any further, since the FDA has officially approved the Pfizer vaccine, and if anything, should favor the mandate of vaccines due to its efficacy and safety for the public. As an avid public health enthusiast and member of the Public Health Research Association, I strongly support the need for everyone, everybody to be vaccinated. That way, we as students can receive the educational experience we deserve without compromising the health of others. With that, I hope the board of SOCCCD will consider mandating vaccines so we can return to our campus. Hi, my name is Rachel Avalos. I am a first-year student attending Irvine Valley College. I am dedicated student to health research and safety for Orange County, as I have served resident patients firsthand as a volunteer at UCI Medical Center for three years. I am also a cantor at St. John Newman Parish, singing and connecting with the 500-person congregation for many facets of the greater Irvine community. As a student and server who loves their community and knows firsthand the importance of human interaction in a community, I present this public statement to support a vaccine mandate for students and staff members of SOCCCD. The surge in the pandemic led to the immediate lockdown of cities worldwide. However, the push for vaccines has led to a major drop in cases, and it's proven to be as safe as the FDA officially approved the Pfizer vaccine. These initiatives towards making our communities safe once more should be regarded as steps forward to returning back to campus. I truly believe that as a community, we can work together to create a safe environment and have made these initiatives by educating the public, through my position on the Public Health Research Association. All things said, I hope that the board of SOCCCD will mandate the vaccine so we can return to our campus. My name is Brian Nguyen. I am a second-year student attending Irvine Valley College. I present this public statement to support the vaccine mandate for students and staff members of SOCCCD. Over the past year, the world has been healing from a devastating virus that has scarred families across the globe. In recent months, however, the push for vaccines has led to a stagnant, stagnant drop in cases, and as a result, has led to the opening of many public places, including numerous institutions. The student's college experience is nothing like one in person. I understand the possible challenges that can arise by enforcing these new policies. As a member of the Public Health Research Association, I am actively educating students and community members about the benefits of the vaccine, because I would love to come back to school. With that, I hope that the board of SOCCCD will consider mandating vaccines so we can return to our campus. Hello, I am Gerardo Chavez, president of the Student Senate for California Community Colleges. Thousands of lives were lost due to the COVID-19 pandemic and remain to be an imminent, and remains to be an imminent threat to us and the most vulnerable populations. The Student Senate recognizes the importance of students' health and concerns as campuses across California open the doors for in-person instruction. Therefore, the Student Senate for California Community Colleges supports the requirements of vaccines and flexibility to recognize medical exemption and sincerely held religious beliefs. We urge all staff, faculty, and students to follow local safety protocols in order to protect themselves and others and prevent the spread of the virus. We support the request of the Associated Students of Irvine Valley College and urge the board of trustees to make decisions with students in mind, as alluded in the California Community College Chancellor's Office Vision for Success. My name is Rajul Verma. I am a second-year honor student at Irvine Valley College, majoring in biopsychology and public health. I am writing this public message to support the mandate of requiring a vaccine for all students, staff members, and faculty in the SOCCCD. I noticed and learned that most UCs, Cal States, and other community college districts and universities have made the vaccine a requirement and a mandate for those who want to attend college in person, as well as interacting with their professors and peers. I feel that it is so unfair for students to not have in-person education, as the learning and overall experience is of a much higher quality. This encourages students to get more involved and enrich their life on campus. I was looking forward to the college experience, at least in my second year of college, as I had already lost my senior year of high school and also my first year of college. But due to the vaccine not being mandated, I fear for the safety, not just in me, but everyone. With the vaccine, there is a lower rate of COVID-19 transmission and therefore less of an impacted population. I have also been educating my community as the vice president of IVC PHRA, or Public Health Research Association, because of the many various precautions that we must take and adapt to as the virus evolves every couple of months, or whenever it comes in contact with a new population. I hope you take this message promoting safety of all into consideration. The following email is from William Palma. The following board members were emailed in over 100 emails to SOCCCD. Trustee Marcia Milcher, trustee Timothy Tim Jamal, trustee TJ Prendergast III, trustee James R. Wright. Other general emails in the SOCCCD website were also included. Paired with the emails were phone calls made to SOCCCD. Voicemails were left. Approximately 98% of these attempts were neglected from 2016 to 2020. Student issues with Privacy Act violations, BAIN Act violations, Disability Act violations, grade grievance, racism, free speech, and more were all ignored, even when informing the board that Dean Penelope was a matter of discussion. South Orange County Community College District attempted to delegate back to her. Instead, SOCCCD had me arrested in a free speech area at Saddleback College, then failed to release discovery through Letitia Clark, MPP. Even worse, campus police Bradley Fowler files the warrant twice, with pics as evidence taken from a video not released in its entirety. Under CAEDC 5020, we believe board members should resign or vacate positions. Petition will begin. I would like to investigate this crime freely on campus to notify all students with flyers. We know there's another video. Any student knowing of this arrest on 11/18/2019 noon can DM me at @secureapple on Twitter. We will not allow our people to be called rapists by political followers who parrot division and hate. Mass shootings, school shootings were not what my work entailed for five years investigating Saddleback College. Expect me on campus soon, my end. This is a public comment from ASIVC regarding, okay, my comment is on behalf of ASIVC, the student representative body of Irvine Valley College. We held an emergency ASIVC meeting last Friday to discuss the reversal of the campus opening due to the Delta variant of COVID-19. After a thorough discussion with ASIVC, we motion and passed a resolution in support of a vaccine mandate at Irvine Valley College. During the meeting, we had a long and fruitful discussion with multiple perspectives and carefully approached the middle ground on how to approach vaccine mandates. After a thoughtful discussion and debate, we decided to support a vaccine mandate that allowed exceptions and different alternatives to be as inclusive and understanding as possible. This includes a committee that will work alongside campus leadership to endorse and encourage getting vaccines, while curtailing misinformation about them. We're not trying to remove anyone's freedom of choice, but trying to get back to an optimal learning and teaching environment. At this point, the board's approach has always taken our campus safety very seriously, and we're very appreciative of this. And we see this is the next step and a great opportunity in ensuring that safety persists when campus does eventually open back up. Thank you all for your time, and best regards for the support of our vaccine mandate. Best regards, D'Angelo Hunter. And the last one, hello, my name is Jahan Khan, a first-year data science major at IVC. I am making a public comment to support our vaccine mandate for the district. With online learning, inequality has risen. Many students do not have the privilege to continue distance learning. Throughout the last academic year, I have had to deal with a plethora of issues, such as finding suitable testing environments that maintain the integrity of proctoring policies, finding support to accommodate for disabilities, or consistent connection to a stable internet. The mindset that students are privileged and oblivious to the lives of underrepresented students. With the potential extension of distance learning, I am severely discouraged from continuing my educational path. If my college begins to offer hybrid learning, students like myself will be left in an unfair ultimatum. I will be, it will be to decide between protecting the health of their loved ones or an education. Not only can the board maintain equity on campuses, but we can also contribute to stagnant vaccination rates, progressing society towards normalcy. Please consider all students when making your decision and the psychological, financial, and physical toll it may take. Those are all the public comments.
Thank you. Thank you for all those public comments. We, the board has been listening to them, so thank you for them. And now we're moving on to oral reports, starting with board reports. And I've been rotating the boards, and this time we're starting with trustee Carolyn Inman. Do you have a board report today?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I really enjoyed trustee Jamal's remarks, because they're similar to what I want to say. You know, the, starting back to school for a person who spent pretty much their entire life in school, that would be me, is a very, the first day of school is just the most exciting thing, if you love school. In, in previous generations, I remember having, you know, they would buy, my mother would buy me a dress, five dresses, so I could wear a new dress each day. Now, it's all different, but that just represents the excitement. And it was so exciting to go to the openings, both of Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College, and to see the people who were just really, really pleased to be together and to be able to talk to each other and see each other again. And this is the first time that I've been able to go to a meeting in person in this beautiful facility, and I'm very grateful for that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, trustee Bobby J.
Bobby J., sir.
Okay. Can I take this off to talk?
Leave it on.
Welcome back, board members. It's so good to see you all in person. Finally, we get to see each other in person. On Tuesday, August 3rd, the IVC Foundation Board of Governors held their annual retreat. While some attended online, approximately two-thirds of us gathered on the patio at the clubhouse at Lake Mission Viejo. We spent the bulk of the time discussing the composition of the board. After answering a brief survey, we determined that we were diverse in terms of age and professions. Between us all, we speak seven languages in addition to English. More than half of our members attended a community college, and many others had family members who did. We also identified areas of growth, including representation from local service clubs and industries. On Monday, August 16th, I attended both the IVC and Saddleback's presidents' opening sessions. The IVC event, which I attended virtually, was excellent. They did a phenomenal job of coordinating all the pre-recorded and live segments. Thanks to the Departments of Marketing and Creative Services, Performing Arts, Technology Services, Facilities, and the Office of the President for a job well done. It was an excellent presentation. The same day, I attended in person the president's welcome at Saddleback College. President Stern and academic Senate President Dr. Margot Lovett gave comprehensive and enlightening presentations on key issues that'll unpack the college over the coming terms. Thanks to them for the information and the hard work that went into their talks. After President Stern's opening session, I attended the board policy meeting in the chancellor's conference room. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, trustee J. And next trustee Prendergast, do you have comments?
Just, you know, the norm here for a few years since we made the shift, that I have not been able to attend the opening sessions and the chancellor's remarks, due to my school starting so early, and I do miss them. I really wish there was a way I could figure out how to get there, but it's the first few days of meeting my students. And so that excitement that you guys have all mentioned is palpable. It is, it is nice, and I agree with trustee Jamal. The timing of us having our first meeting on the first day of school is auspicious in that sense. But congratulations, everyone, being back in whatever form you are back. And we wish you the best of luck for the semester and going forward in your future. That's all.
Thank you. And next, trustee Wright.
Yes, I was able to see three Professional Development Week events. The first event I attended was, the week kicked off on Monday, August 16th, with the IVC president opening session, which was held in a hybrid format from 9:30 AM to 11:00 AM. Welcome remarks were given by the board of trustee president Marcia Melchecker and chancellor Kathleen Burke. IVC president John Hurdandis welcomed faculty, staff, and administrators to his Flex Week opening via Zoom or persons at the Performing Arts Center. Second event, President Elliot Stern welcomed faculty, staff, and administrators to his Flex Week opening on the afternoon of Monday, August 16th, from 2:00 PM to 11:00 to 4:00 PM. Steve president Marcia Melchecker and chancellor Kathleen Burke provided remarks. This year's opener was held outdoor on campus and live streaming for those who viewed from a remote location. President Stern and academic- Location. President Stern and Academic Senate President Margot. Levitt provided a comprehensive update on the key issues impacted with college in the fall semester. And finally, the third event I attended was that on August the eighteenth, Wednesday from four PM to five PM. Saddleback College President Town Hall Meeting via Zoom was held. President Stern took charge. Of the meeting. It was a wonderful event. Thank you for all that they've done.
Thank you. Next trustee Tim Jamal.
Thank you. I regret not making the opening sessions. I'm sorry. I heard they went well. I just had some conflicts with my work. But I trust everything was great. I heard some good. Reports from the other trustees and from others who were in attendance. Thank you, Bobby, for referencing the board policy meeting that we had, was it last week? I think we had it last week. And, you know, I thought it went well. I touched on a little bit in my invocation. I, I believe that vaccines are important. And, you know, the issue of a vaccine mandate, testing, other requirements, I really welcome input from those in the community here. It's something that I deal with in my private life. We, I manage a number of events and, you know, we had to do some mandating of vaccines or testing over this past weekend. And, you know, we faced some initial resistance and by the end we had a hundred percent attendance and compliance. So I think, I think it's something we're going to have to deal with. And I understand, I, I think the ASIVC statement was, was pretty good. And I think the comments were really heartfelt tonight and I really appreciate it. The last thing is, I heard there was a, I read through the media, there was a football game this Friday at Saddleback College Stadium. First one ever in our new stadium. So it'd be nice to hear from those. How did it go? Is there an after action report? How was the concessions? How did the wifi work? Be nice to know, you know, maybe we'll hear from Dr. Stern tonight. I did hear something over the weekend. I tend to wear a lot of apparel from the colleges and I was wearing a saddleback apparel and I ran into someone, a student. Who said several students were kicked out of the game because they hadn't paid the, the entry fee. So I guess that's an issue, I guess, with, with facilities. I would think that maybe Santa Margarita could be accommodating, that if you're a student and you're a football player, you could attend the game. So maybe we can look into that.
That would not have been a fee we charged.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying that I did hear stories of that and I don't know how, I'm guessing they're true. I have no reason to believe they're not true. So maybe that's something we can look into. So excited for the opening of the stadium next, when is it? October? And look forward to.
Saturday.
Look, what's that?
Game next Saturday.
Game next Saturday. So I'll try to make it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And next trustee Whit Raygo.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to faculty, to students and all administrators and staff. I had an interesting month. I did attend several webinars. One that was interesting. Was called the Leading Courageous Conversations About Equitable Placements. And for anybody who's interested, I did have to look up AB seven oh five and eighteen oh five. It had to do with supporting students, something that I wasn't in, as knowledgeable about, was a good, a good webinar. I also attended the South Orange County Business Council meeting. It was great. It was on Zoom. But they talked about AI and it was most interesting what we're going to do in healthcare with it. And what I really liked is their discussion on mental health resources. I think that's so important that we're all aware of it. And you all know that I'm an advocate for all the resources that we can use. I did attend the board policies and I want to thank very much those, especially the business office. And Emery, thank you so much for all of the hard information. We went through thirty nine policies. And I remember as a faculty, I don't think I read a whole lot of policies, only as they related to me and my work. But I have to say, I want to tell all of you that a lot of work goes into all of those. We, as the word is, cleaned them up, but we also incorporated what we have to do with DEI. And I just wanted to say that I really appreciated all of the hard information that was given to us. I actually read them. So I attended the professional development and both colleges were awesome. They really were. The presidents offered excellent information to us, updated us. And I love the videos that came from IVC. I love the closeness and, and how I felt to introduce myself to many of the faculty that I don't know. And I'd like sharing your vacations. I also appreciated at Saddleback, Margot Lovett, who's our president of Academic Senate. Her presentation was very, very, very true. And I wish that all of us could hear some of the information that she gave us on racism. Once again, I hope that all of you have a great semester. And I hope you really support our goal to get vaccinated, to beat this pandemic. It's here to stay and I want all of us to understand that and we have to, we have to fight it the best we can. So best of luck, everyone.
Thank you. And I'll try not to repeat anything, but as board president, I had the great honor to speak at both Saddleback and IVC's Professional Development Week. The college presidents, the chancellor and myself, welcome staff back to fall semester twenty twenty one. They attended via Zoom and Facebook. It was pedagogically efficacious and they left to my jokes. And you could see this opening session of Saddleback College on the Saddleback College YouTube channel. Among the, the other meetings I attended from the Professional Development Week was IVC's AB seven oh five revisited two years after the initial implementation. And I wanted to go to this because I want to see how the AB seven oh five was going. So many of the professors were worried after a hundred years of remedial education. After a hundred years of having remedial education classes. They were just totally, just about totally eliminated by new legislation mandated by the bill AB seven oh five, as you all know. But the new experiment has been an incredible success at IVC, even though many were very worried about it. Revising classes such as trigonometry to get them to work for all students has been a challenge for our professors. But they agreed that the class tutors have been phenomenal. And these hardworking faculty agreed that the team approach is working. In addition, as a scientist, this was confirmed by their metrics. So thanks to our mathematics, English ESL professors and counselors and our students. And that our students are succeeding and thriving with very little remedial classes, just jumping right into the regular classes. And also many of the things on the IVC Professional Development Week can be found on the IVC Professional Development Week. Website and President Stern's Town Hall Meeting, they had hundreds of Saddleback College professional professors in attendance. And these professional development weeks meetings keep our professors, staff and administrators informed. And continue our culture of caring at both campuses. Thank you. And now we move on to the student trustee, Satorah Mateen. Is she here today?
Back yet.
She's not here?
Class until seven thirty.
Okay, she has a class. Thank you. And then the Associated Student Government Reports. First, the Saddleback Set Student Body President Sam Lockhart. And then the ASIVC Student Body President, D'Angelo Hunter. They're being brought up right now.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Should I go?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening. AS, history currently is, we've already had our retreat this past Friday. Dr. Stern, President Stern spoke at that retreat. And we are officially taking a stance on vaccination issue. We support any future vaccination initiatives at Saddleback. That is all.
Thank you, thank you. And then D'Angelo Hunter from Saddle, from ASIVC, sir.
Awesome. Hey, good evening, everyone. We held our club advisor training during Professional Development Week for advisor training. And for faculty advisors and growing club and inter club council. Sorry, ASIVC also attended the president's opening at IVC. Good to see, you know, a couple of you there, by the way. We also participated in orientation, AKA Laser Day, teaming up with faculty to welcome new students and answer any questions they had about our school. ASIVC had an emergency meeting, which was pointed out in our public comment in support of a vaccine mandate. We also are having our second legislative meeting Friday and are excited for the semester ahead with all the new senators. We are also preparing for virtual engagement and are optimistic about some hybrid event soon. And lastly and probably, the OCTA bus pass has been rolled out and now over ten thousand students have access to free bus rides in Orange County. Removing another equity barrier to allow more students to attend our awesome campus. So we're super excited about, you know, things moving forward right now. So, and that's it for me. Thank you.
It's great. IVC students will also get free bus, bus passes. That's wonderful. Thank you. Good work, good work, students, student government. Okay, now the IVC College Academic Senate, Dan, do you relate?
Yes, good evening. Good evening, trustees and Chancellor Burke. Thank you so much for bringing up all of these fine issues this evening. And on behalf of the IVC Academic Senate, I would like to commend our faculty, our staff and our students for their continued patience. Flexibility and investment in education during these rather difficult times of a pandemic and its unpredictable variants. And on that note, I would like to commend ASIVC for so thoughtfully bringing forward the issue of mandatory vaccination on our campuses for discussion. To that point, on our first senate meeting, which will take place on September second. I will be inviting our ASIVC officers to come and discuss and brainstorm. Their ideas with the Academic Senate and ways in which we can. Move forward and think about the wisest ways that we can bring people back to campus, continue to improve. Elements of distance learning that we have improved over the last year. And to really improve more generally. Educational opportunities for all of our students at both IVC and Saddleback. As you can hear by the public comments tonight and by our many student and faculty voices. I believe that we are ready indeed to move forward on this issue. And we thank the board for listening and we look forward to leadership from our board on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And next, the Saddleback College Academic Senate, Margot Lovett, who gave a wonderful presentation at the opening session at Saddleback College.
Thank you so much, President Milchick. Yeah, as the trustees have noted, we just completed another successful week of excellent professional development sessions. And I am really gratified by how well attended most of those sessions were. And I'm also personally gratified by how many positive comments I received from faculty, staff, administrators and trustees. About my remarks during last week's president's welcome. To me, these positive comments signify a genuine desire to engage in those difficult conversations. That are essential to ensure that all of our students, staff, faculty and administrators feel that they truly belong on our campus. Among those uncomfortable conversations we've started to have are those about race, racism. And the unconscious attitudes, stereotypes or biases we hold about others. Now, some people feel that talking about race is itself racist. But I would argue that not talking about race and ethnicity is like not talking about the elephant in the room. Everyone knows it's there, but no one is willing to acknowledge it. For me, unconscious biases are the most insidious precisely because they are unconscious. So that means that we may not even know that we hold these attitudes. And these attitudes are everywhere in our society. Think for a minute, how many of us believe that girls are just not as good as boys in math and science? And if that's your belief, you are consistent with the statements and the sentiments of former Harvard President Lawrence Summers. Who in two thousand and five, while addressing an academic conference that included prominent professional women scientists and professors. Said that, well, innate meaning biological differences between women and men explain why fewer women. Are successful at science careers in math and science than men. We stereotype welfare recipients as lazy and irresponsible. Young African American men as violent, Muslim American women as oppressed, Asian American women as submissive. And Latinx men as gang members and menial workers. Now, the most harmful thing for me about these stereotypes is that the people who are the targets of them often come to internalize them and believe them about themselves. And these people include our students. So many faculty have experienced this in our classes. We've seen how hard some of our students have had to struggle against self doubt, lack of confidence, limited ambitions. The belief that they'll never be more than, or that they are less than, and that they don't deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. All of us, faculty, staff, administrators, trustees are here because of our students. And we owe it to them to have these difficult conversations. Thank you all for listening. That's my board, that's my president's report.
Thank you, President Lovett. And now the Faculty Association, President Louis Long.
Good evening, Board of Trustees Members. These are extraordinary times. After seventeen months of varying degrees of online college and after promises that we've been slowly reemerging from the pandemic. Many, including our, our students and teachers, long to return to some semblance of normalcy. On the other hand, with the COVID nineteen vaccines limitations being increasingly exposed, especially toward the Delta variant, and especially for the immunosuppressed. With the possibility that even fully vaccinated people can serve as carriers of the disease, especially when they are asymptomatic. And with growing concerns about long-term health effects, especially for the most vulnerable in our community. Many people feel ever more concerned about the risks of venturing into contact with the general population. Many of whom may not be vaccinated at all. In our rush to return to normalcy, let's not sacrifice the most vulnerable members of our community. Some faculty members with documented suppressed or compromised immune systems are being forced to come to campus. Mixing with students, faculty and staff who may not be vaccinated or may be vaccinated but infectious anyway. These people are more vulnerable to infection and more likely to have severe consequences from an infection. Their very lives are at risk. While it may be legal, it is inhumane to ask faculty members to literally risk their lives from an infection when they could fully effectively work online. As they have for seventeen months already and as many of their colleagues are still. Also, it's absurd that the colleges would pay them not to work and then pay someone else to do the work they are paid not to do. When they are fully capable and willing to work online. These are extraordinary times and ordinary policies, procedures and processes simply have not been designed to handle them. I beg the colleges to recognize this situation and take extraordinary steps to protect our faculty as they work to serve our students. Thank you.
Thank you, President Long. How's the Student Body Trustee, Sierra Mateen? You have, you have something to say?
Yeah, thank you. I just joined from my class, but. I agree as well because. It's really hard to identify whether people are vaccinated or not, especially if there isn't like a mandate required. You know, students to be vaccinated. And so I understand, you know, faculty and students aren't comfortable. And I fully support, I know there was students previously that came. And they explained that they would like to have a mandate and so I definitely support it.
Thank you. We're listening for sure. Thank you. All of you. Thank you. And now the IVC Classified Senate, Daisy Ortiz.
Good evening. Sorry, it took me a second to connect. Good evening, Chancellor Burke, President Milchecker, rest of the board, everyone. Good evening. And I just wanted to echo the sentiments of the board today. Happy Fall. Even though our fall wasn't what we expected it to be. I have to say the resilience of our. I have to say the resilience of our classified professionals makes me beyond proud. Our campus was beautiful today. We were excited to see all of our students on campus. From our wonderful marketing and creative services who posted all these wonderful signs for our students to our facilities and maintenance crew who made sure that our campus was beautiful, from the grass to the new plants they planted, to the support of our president and our VPSS and all of our administrators who were in the front of the campus greeting all of our students as they drove around our roundabout. Our police services who were all over campus making sure that students knew where they were going, making sure they got to the right parking lot. And to my own student services areas, they were amazing. We greeted and make sure every student got where they needed to be. We truly echoed what it meant to be a caring campus and that we really do care and I'm beyond proud. Thank you.
The campuses are very caring campuses. So thank you so much. Saddleback College Classified Senate, Darren England.
He's not in attendance.
Okay, and California School Employees Association, Scott Ferguson-Green.
Thank you, President Milchick. Welcome back, Board of Trustees. It's so wonderful to see you back in the Ronald Reagan Board of Trustees Room. I was unable to attend last month's Board of Trustee meeting because I was attending the California School Employees Association Annual Conference. Once again, for the second year in a row, we had this conference virtually, but we had over 1,700 delegates attend the conference online, virtual. And along with the guests and visitors, we had over 2,500 in attendance for the four-day conference. We were able to get a lot of things accomplished in the annual conference. And the 1,700 delegates actually elected a new association president and his name is Matthew Shane Dishman. Association President Dishman has been a police officer with the Kern High School School District since 1998. And he's actually has left his post to begin his duties full-time as the association president of CSCA. He previously served as president of his local chapter and he was a chief union steward. He was also a chief negotiator in his local chapter. He is a drug recognition expert and trainer. He also was a safety instructor and volunteers in his own community. He succeeded the former president Ben Aldapena and the Board of Trustees, or excuse me, the Board of Directors. They are now fully working with the new association president. By his leadership as the previous president of CSCA has taken this pandemic very seriously. And now Association President Dishman has also led the way in making sure that across the state, our staff working with students as they start to return back to K-12 and the community colleges and some of the other colleges as well, that people are taking care of their own safety by observing all safety protocols. And so that's very much encouraged. At the CSA Conference, the delegates in less than three hours was able to raise $66,000 for the Dorothy Bjork Humanitarian Fund. And with the other fundraising efforts by the delegates on conference, the total that was raised was over $120,000. And those funds can be allocated to help our members who may be in dire need. And of course, as you know, the fires up in Northern California have been quite a spectacle and a problem for many those that live in that area. And so some of those funds actually will go and help some of those folks who have to meet those challenges. So we're looking forward to the new semester. I am very proud of our classified staff across this district who during these last 17 months have done a wonderful job in helping support the faculty, management and administration in transitioning to online learning and being able to start to welcome our students back as this being the first day of the fall semester. So I'm really proud of their efforts and I want to thank the administration and the Board of Trustees for their leadership in assuring that in all aspects that everyone will remain safe. And we're looking for even greater efforts to continue as we meet these challenges with this new Delta variant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very interesting. Thank you. And the next Police Officers Association, Beau Arbuthnot.
Not in attendance.
Not here? Okay, then we move on. Are there any board requests for reports at this meeting? No, none today. And first, we have a public hearing and we're going to conduct a public hearing with the proposed budgets, budget of the district for fiscal year 2022. And we are now on the board agenda item 5.1, a discussion of and approval of the proposed budget of the SOC CCD for fiscal year 2122. Board item 5.1 is the public hearing on the matter at hand is now open. Vice Chancellor Gable will provide an introduction.
Thank you, President Milchick. The agenda items tonight pertain to a public hearing on the approval of the South Orange County Community College District proposed budget for fiscal year 2122, which includes the associate student government budgets. Public notices have invited all interested persons to attend this public hearing and express opinions about the district proposed budget for fiscal year 2122. Tonight, we will have budget presentations on each college's associate student government organization's budget and also on the district budget. Once all three presentations have completed, the public will be invited to comment. Starting off tonight is DeAngelo Hunter from Ayesha Ahmed will present the ASIVC budget. DeAngelo, please proceed with the ASIV budget presentation.
Hello, this is the Associate Students of Irvine Valley College budget presentation. Sorry, can't talk after a little bit. My name is DeAngelo Hunter. Thanks for the introduction. Today I'm joined by Franz Kivitt, Executive Vice President of ASIVC, and Ayesha Ahmed, Vice President of Budget and Finance. Next slide, please. Hi, so I'll be going over the 2020-2021 actuals. For our sources of funds, ASIVC collected ASIVC access and hit our goals by collecting during the fall, summer and spring. In our bookstore commissions, the current year actuals are reduced by full its unmet contractual obligations for revenue, which reversed this year. They couldn't meet their obligation to our contract essentially, but it is made up with the HERF fund. Also, there was a decrease in revenue due to COVID-19 campus closure. That's why you see the $35,000 amount. The actual revenue was $133,000. For our uses of funds, due to the COVID campus closure, there was no co-curricular travel or conference attendance. And so on-campus activities and programs were also suspended. Hence why we are under suspended in these categories. However, we are optimistic that we'll be able to use our knowledge of the great online engagement that we had and adapted to bring more activities and engagement to an even higher level than what we seen last year. Next slide, please. As you can see, we're budgeted for $1.3 million for the 2021-2022 year. Our beginning balance is $831,000. Our projected sales for ASIVC access is $110,000, which is about the same as last year's. And then our projected bookstore revenue is $225,000. Our projected amount that we'll receive from the HERF funds for lost revenue is $207,000. And then our next slide is going to be presented by Ayesha Ahmed. And I'll let her take it on from here.
Thank you. So this is the 2122 ASIVC adopted budget. So for our sources of funds, we have our beginning balance and there's an increase from the 2122 tentative budget to the 2122 adopted budget of around $400,000. And that's because of the carryover on spent funds as well as the HERF revenue backfill. So our ASIVC access sales are the same from the 2122 tentative budget and the 2122 adopted budget. Our bookstore commissions, so there was a decrease in the 2021 adopted budget to the 2122 tentative budget. And that is because of the contracts being renegotiated with our cafeteria, coffee car and vending commissions. There was, basically that contract is still being pending. So that's why there's a little dash for the 2122 adopted budget. And we also received the HERF lost revenue. With our uses of funds, we have or planning on supporting our ASIVC events and programs. And we're being optimistic and hoping for hybrid and in-person events for this upcoming year or this year. We're also continuing to support our club programs support with contingency. So there is an increase from the 2122 tentative budget to the 2122 adopted budget. And that is because of the the OCTA contract is within contingency. Also, the timeline was short, so a lot of the HERF funds also went into contingency. And for student life nondiscretionary, it decreased around $126,000. And that's because the OCTA contract money was pulled from the student life nondiscretionary and put into contingency. So that's why there's a decrease on the 2122 tentative budget to the 2122 adopted budget. We're also planning on continuing our support for student services like DSPS, Career Services, International Student Services. Also, we are continuing to support scholarships to provide assistance to any student who may be facing hurdles in their goals in achieving higher education. We're also continuing to support our excellent co-curricular programs and instructional programs on campus. Next slide, please. Thank you.
So I'll be discussing what we plan to do with the student representation fee. So last year, because of the pandemic, we were not paying for any students to be traveling anywhere. So we have a lot of money that's been left in suspension. However, last year we did send students, ICC and ASIVC officers to the Student Senate for California Community Colleges General Assembly where they received additional training. In terms of this year and this fiscal year, we planned to, ASIVC plans to do a lot more advocacy, both on a local, regional and statewide level. So we'll be using a lot of our student representation fees to focus on civic engagements, voter empowerment and really making our our voices and our advocacy heard. Next slide, please. So our three biggest goals for this, for this year is to focus on one, hybrid student engagements. With the pandemic, which would hopefully be winding down, we want to be able to bridge the gap between in-person and online events. So we want to hold hybrid events like virtual club days and town halls and open forums. We also really want to support our, the student governments by focusing a lot on judicial appointments and senate elections and growing the club programs so students are able to find their little community and at IBC. The second thing we want to do is to want to focus on our student centers or expanding our DEI push that we started last year. We plan to do this by expanding the leadership and training that's provided to our student leaders. And by also breaking down some non-academic barriers to education for our students. Example of this would be like the OCTA college bus program, which removes the barrier of transportation. And also to expand to also expand our advocacy within the college itself by expanding the, our presence in shared governance and overall just general governance meetings. And finally, we also want to expand our student leadership. So we're working very closely with the California, the SSC as our regional affairs director and our vice chair are both to the region are both from IBC. And using their events and their activities, we plan to hope, we plan to provide our students with the best possible training. Thank you so much for listening to our presentation.
Thank you, DeAngelo, Franz and Ayesha for your excellent presentation. This has certainly been an interesting year with so many funds lost due to students not being on campus and yet being replaced by the HERF funds. Are there any questions from the board members regarding the ASIVC budget presentation? Oh, trustee Tim Jamal, who has a comment?
We're going back to old school, huh?
Okay.
I was going to log into Zoom. Should we do that?
I've got my laptop here.
Okay. Great presentation. Thank you. I just want to, I had a question. I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly or maybe I'm not. On the adopted budget, you're, you have an ending fund balance of 582,888. Are those substantial sum? Are you not planning on spending that? Is that what, is that my understanding? You're going to carry it over.
I'm sorry. What line was that?
You're ending on exhibit A, page four of six. You have the uses of funds and you have an ending fund balance of, in the adopted budget of 582,888. Are you just, is that, I just want to make sure I understand what that means that you're carrying those funds over. So you're, those are funds that you're not planning to spend. Is that, or am I reading that incorrectly?
Okay, so, so the contingency, so that is basically we're planning on using that towards the OCTA contract. And also in general, we wanted to keep our contingency a little high because of the fluctuations in revenue streams. So like in our sources of funds, there was fluctuations and we wanted to probably like a cushion of support to any instances that could have, that could occur. So we are planning on using those funds. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think let maybe, do you understand my question? So it's
Yeah, the $582,000 is what their projected ending fund balance is on June 30th of 2022.
No, I get, that's what I thought.
Roll into the next year. And I think that's what Ayesha is saying that in future years, you're planning on using it for the OCTA contract. And it's, I would say artificially high this year because they entered into the OCTA contract, but OCTA received a grant. So the students aren't having to pay anything this year. So that's what that $127,000 savings is in the current fiscal year that we're budgeting. So they're pre-funding it.
No, look, I'm the last one to tell you to spend money if you don't have to spend it. So that's great. I just want to understand it. So if it's spent, it's going to be spent 2223. Okay. Thank you.
And so because of the grant to OCTA, the students do not have to pay for the student bus passes this year, but starting next year, they will, student government will have to foot the bill for paying for free bus passes for all the students of IBC, which is great because that'll make sure our students can get on campus. It'll help with equity, DEI. It'll help with keeping energy efficiency. So it'll be really good. Okay, so are there any other questions?
No.
Thank you again, DeAngelo, Franz and Ayesha. And now we're moving to Saddleback College ASG presentation. And Sam Lockhart and James Estes will present the Saddleback College ASG budget. Sam, please proceed with the ASG budget presentation for Saddleback College.
Yes, good evening again. As already mentioned, I'm Sam Lockhart and with me is James Estes. And tonight we are going to be presenting our budget for this upcoming fiscal year. Next slide, please. Thank you. So for some context, here is our adopted revised and actual budget from the previous year. As you can see, our bookstore contract actual was substantially decreased from our adopted and revised. We were not on campus this past year, so our food services budget, or rather sources, was zero. We were not on campus this past year, so our food services budget, what or rather sources was zero. Our stamp sales did go up, um this, oh, excuse me, I. James, I think I spoke over you, and this is your slide, got a little too excited there.
So, yeah, um. I just wanted to also go over that um eight hundred and eighty five dollars that you can see is decreased. Um from the actual is because we were planning on like a. Uh baseball event last year before COVID hit, but then we weren't able to get a refund out yet. After it's canceled, so this year we wanted to get the refund out. So that's why, as uh Sam mentioned, the bookstore contract and cafeteria was because of. The pandemic as well, there weren't students on campus, so we were unable to fill that. Kind of contract. And then, but the but the stamp sales, it actually, we did. Uh we we were proud to have gone a hundred seventy thousand dollars in funds. And with the her uh. Foundation, they gave us, uh they also gave us around two hundred thousand dollars. Uh and lost revenue. Uh which left us with a about seven uh eight around eight hundred thousand dollars. And uh in correlation with the use of funds, uh it we also had to decrease any uh spending. Uh so as you can see, especially with the scholarships, unfortunately, uh because of how uh. The previous students realized what was going on with the pandemic, we had to shortcut the spending on scholarships a little bit, unfortunately, so. And uh next slide please. And these are budget highlights, uh we have about five hundred thousand dollars in balance uh. Due to that uh due turnover uh from last fiscal year. Um and about a hundred fifty thousand dollars gonna be used in I A S G activity fee sales. Um and then with um. With the big store and food services, uh since COVID is. Uh COVID has slowed down a little bit, I mean. And uh and students are back on campus, we have the bookstore and food services available, so we're gonna be receiving about forty forty percent of the contracted services based years. And uh additionally, after uh subtracting the emergency research, the emergency reserve. Uh we're committed to donate at least twenty percent of our total sources of funds to uh scholarships, including the foundation general scholarship. Child development center and financial aid book scholarships and the majority to the foundation. And uh lastly, uh about seven percent of our total source of funds will be used on the emergency reserve.
I'd excuse that really your hiccup, thank you, James, so. Step our previous budget from the last fiscal year and now here is our. Adopted tentative, adopted budget from the previous fiscal year once again. Tentative budget for this upcoming fiscal year and our current adopted budget. As you can see, our bookstore contract went down a little bit from between. Last year's adopted and this year's tentative and adopted as well. We're going to go with a conservative estimate of fourteen hundred dollars for food vending services as a source of income. Just because we're not entirely sure how many people are going to be on campus and how many people are going to be buying cafeteria food quite yet. Our A S G activity fee is going to remain constant. And as you could see from comparing the this fiscal year's adopted budget column to the other two columns. We actually increased spending in most of our areas, one area I want to point out is our A S G operations. Uh the under the column personnel non discretionary, that went down a little bit. Primarily because we're transitioning to a mobile app for A S G services where students can actually buy stamps. Virtually instead of having to pay for them physically or picking them up physically, which saves us a few thousand dollars. Our scholarships went up a little bit as well, so we are contributing more to the foundation. And like James mentioned, about ten percent is going to our emergency reserve. Next slide please. Okay, so I believe A S I B C mentioned this earlier, but for context, uh this is the student representation fee adopted budget. Students who register at Settleback or for that matter, I believe, as mentioned earlier, A S I B C have the option to. Pay contribute two dollars to this, this project, one dollar goes to us and one dollar goes to the. Student Senate of California Community Colleges. The left side is the adopted budget, uh student representation fee adopted budget for from the previous year, middle is previous year's actuals and the right is. Adopted budget for this fiscal year. So. As you can see that in the background, this is mainly used for advocacy efforts such as travel. Our beginning balance is pretty high in the right column, the adopted budget for this year, because we had a lot of. Kit layover from last year, as you can guess, COVID severely limited trap opportunities for advocacy and especially. Travel. Uh we contribute. We have to um u- use some funds to contribute and give into the state shares of the in state um share and the district admin fairs. We're going to keep it high this fiscal year. For the travel expenses, because we're optimistic that COVID won't be a major impacting factor and advocacy advocacy can be physical. Actually traveling will be a possibility this fiscal year once again, next slide please. So this is an overview of A S G's. I um excuse me, I would also like to add that the A S G app is still. In relation to what I've said earlier about our budget, our app is replacing the fiscal. Discount books that we were using earlier. Aside for that moment, but anyway, back to this slide. So this is an overview of our goals for. This upcoming academic year, we're mainly focused on resurrecting campus lifestyle. As you can guess, COVID negatively impacted participation in clubs, in especially student government. In addition to that, and we're looking to recruit and like I say, is to repeat passwords resurrect. The campus lifestyle and bring us back as a strong community. We're working with the campus and district on sustainability es- um efforts. What we have in mind right now is limiting plastic use in food service and we will probably be moving on to. That other endeavors related endeavors when that is successful. We want to create, we want to create more, we're looking to create more programs and services that will. They um allow us in to become an even brighter beacon of opportunity for all students. We're going to increase allocations to scholarships. We're going to uh help students who are food or transportationally insecure, as mentioned before, we're well, I A S I B C alluded to it. There's a bus pa- pass program that can help students who are, like I say, transportationally insecure, need need help getting to school. And the building communities column, that's essentially echoing what I already previously stated. Bringing back the campus lifestyle. And that is all I have at the moment, thank you for allowing me to present.
Okay, um. Thank you, Sam and James, for your presentation, um was an excellent presentation, I have a few questions myself, are there any questions from the board members regarding? The Settleback College A S G budget presentation, okay, trustee Whitredell?
Yes, um can you just uh share with me just a few comments on what what is emergency reserve, what is included in that? And then on the other page, the uses of funds, the district administration fee and state shares share of fees, what do what do those mean?
To provide you a more accurate response, I will have to consult with. A few other authorities from my not from, I can tell you from my knowledge and understanding of the emergency reserve. That is contingency for if we need it, so. In case of a dis- it's essentially a disaster plan and backup in case funds are significantly lower than we expected. It's a reserve and will, it says so in the name, but it's an area we can draw into if we need extra money. We're.
Okay.
We look to mostly keep that in touch and be fiscally conservative if at all possible. But that's a kind of just in case area, if you will.
Okay, alright.
It's their ending fund balance.
Okay.
So that is the end of fund.
And because emergency, I'm thinking. Different.
That's why I contentioned.
Is there any other questions?
Yeah, the other two, well, okay, you're you said you'd get back to us, the other two, alright.
I can answer those if you'd like me to.
Please.
The, so with the student represents- representation fee, as they both mentioned, one dollar goes to the state. And the other dollar is kept locally, so that's what that state sheriff fees is, it's the dollar that we collect from the students that are required to remit to the state. And it's used for the statewide student senate for the California community colleges. The district administration fee, that is the fee that is allowed within the code that established the two dollar fee, so it's seven percent of the fees collected. Is the district administration fee, and so that time that comes. This is district, it comes through. Um our draft model, that's where that comes.
That goes to the district funds?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions? Um I I actually also wondered with this, I was very happy to learn of what the student represent- representation fee is used for. Um and these are where really goals, and I know uh the Settleback College A S G already. Bus free bus test program for students, so that's great. And I I have one question, um you said you 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 have a certain amount of money reserved for scholarships and one was for the child development center, but. But there is no child development center at I B C anymore, so what what do these funds go for?
These are.
Sorry, okay, I get, okay, wonderful.
Think I may have cut out for a moment.
I'm delighted, so 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 thank you, thank you, so these these are funds for um. Like students or or staff members um who can't afford to put their children in the best in this in in our wonderful child development center who. Where two of my children were in it in former years, um and they came out well, so it was a good, very excellent program. So um so thi- these are funds used to help these um parents pay for these uh childcare for their for their children, is that, is that true?
You have to forgive, uh you have to forgive me, I think I may have cut out for one moment, uh would you mind repeating the question?
Oh, the question is, um I wondered if the scholarships for the child development center. Are for people that can't afford to send their children in into the for childcare, they're perhaps. Staff members or students that can't afford to pay for childcare and these scholarships help these people pay for childcare so they can. Attend classes at Settleback College, which I'm very much in favor of.
We we um to answer that question. From my understanding, that is what the childcare scholarships are primarily. Aimed, what population they're primarily aimed toward is students who are. Are raising a child, as you've mentioned before, are raising a child and need financial assistance with uh childcare, so they can attend class with. And be able to effectively be on campus, did that answer your question or do?
Yeah, that's exactly my question, so thank you very much, I'm very much in favor of those scholarships, so I'm glad you're offering them, thank you. Okay, a- and trustee England has a question.
Well, I just wanted to add that uh why two things, like first of all, I just wanted to add that. It's not just that it the childcare is for someone who can't afford it, research shows that one of the best ways to keep. Certain young, many young women in school is if their child is on that campus, it's just an easy transition, they can go. Check on it and say hello, you know, whatever, it's just a very, a very nice.
No, I agree with that, I agree.
Positive.
Yeah, that's I've 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 been in favor for for many, many, many years. Essentially, because my two of my children were in it, and not only for students, but for staff, but for people that work here. They have their children close by to them, is is it's just um something very, very good for this morale of the. Mother or father and the morale of of the child. You're absolutely right, thank you, I've done some research about it too, so thank you, I appreciate that.
My actual question was, I at some colleges, the student bodies pay for part of the competition fees for. Things like choir debate, all of those activities, uh. Activities do not get funds from A S B A S G.
Well, they receive funds uh from A S G on and as needed basis. I I have served, if it's going to be anything like it was last year, I was a member of the budget committee last year. Some groups would come up to us in a meeting and mention, hey, we need funding for an art fair. The the, in particular, the art fair is coming to mind or. So. They have to put in different spending forms. In a ser- a service that we, that's called Woofoo. In order to be read by the budget committee and then the board of direct, board of governance in A S G. So that we can approve for funding and allocate funding, so. I excuse me if I'm a bit scattered when I'm answering this question, but. This branches out to speech and debate, dance competitions, art fairs, you name it. They can fill out this form and we can fund these extracurricular activities, did I answer your question?
Yes, what category does that come from then?
Co-curricular programs.
Co-curricular program.
Is it on here or is it from academic sources?
It's on here, it's on page two of six.
It's on the screen too. Campus life, co-curricular program.
Okay, I see it now.
True, true, depends on what category the group fits in.
Right, I see it now, thank you very much.
We also have some off cycle funding.
What did he say?
They also have some off cycle funding.
Oh, thank you, thank you, sorry, I just couldn't couldn't hear it, thank you.
At least I think that's what he said.
Is that what he said? Okay, is are there any other questions or comments? Okay, so now we we move on to, thank you so much, it was an excellent presentation, we move to the district budget presentation. Vice chancellor Gable, please conduct, please proceed with the district budget presentation.
Thank you. I'm gonna keep off the presentation and then I will turn it over to Kim McCord and then Corey Wapin and Debbie Cattrellian will also be contributing to the presentation tonight. So first up, we have the board philosophy on budget, the board, I'm sure is very familiar with these three tenants. Um on their philosophy of ensuring wise and prudent use of resources. As well as promoting the financial strength and stability. And then lastly, maximizing the educational opportunities for students. The budget that we're presenting to you tonight has kept those three tenants in mind. And we have abided by those completely. Um an example of ensuring wise and prudent use of resources. Uh this budget is funding the facilities master plan that the board approved. Last summer, and so the first year of that plan has been funded. And then on promoting financial strength and stability, and you guys are very proud to say that this is a very good budget that we're presenting to you tonight. Uh we will see that our reserves, and we'll go into details later, they have increased this year primarily because of the pandemic. Both in the savings that we incurred. By not being on campus, as well as all of the higher education emergency relief funds, the her funds that we received, so. We think looking forward, uh we're in a strong fi- financial position this year, as well as probably the next couple of years, but uh what we've been able to set aside. On the next slide, we have our budget development guidelines. Again, these were approved by the board on January nineteenth of twenty twenty one. And we followed each of these development guidelines, I won't run into detail with those, I think the board is familiar with them, but they're there. If anybody wants to go back and look at them, and now I will turn it over to Kim.
Good evening, everybody. Uh first off, I'm gonna walk you through um summary of the actuals from our fiscal twenty twenty one year. The first line is our unrestricted general fund, of course, that's our operating budget. We had a beginning balance of seventy six point seven million. Revenues of just under three hundred and eighteen million. Expenditures of almost three hundred and ten million, within any balance of eighty five million dollars. Some of the other funds to take note of is our retiree benefit, um O P E V trust fund. So we had a very good year, if you have any money in the market, you know it did very well last year during the pandemic. So where we started the year with a hundred and thirty point seven million, we had revenues of forty million. Um expenditures of ten point eight, then any balance of almost a hundred and sixty million, so that fund is fully funded for our liability at this point. And then on the total line, you can see our overall district beginning balance was five hundred and forty eight million. Revenues of five hundred and ninety three, our expenditures of five twenty one. Giving an overall any balance of six hundred and twenty one or six hundred and twenty billion dollars. Some of our revenue assumptions for our budget, it's based on the final state budget that was enacted. The student centered funding formula has a COLA of two point seventy two percent for the current year, it also backfilled COLA from last year that the state did not fund. And we funded it ourselves, so we were happy the state backfilled that for us. Where um hold harmless is two point six million, that is down from four point nine million last year, so we are um doing better on our success metrics that you will see later. The property taxes are based on a three point eight percent increase in our secure taxes. And that's the estimates we got from the county assessor's office, given the current um market situation with um housing, it could go up, because I know um houses are. Flipping quite. Given the current um market situation with um housing, it could go up because I know um houses are flipping quite quickly. For high amounts, our non-resident tuition is ninety five percent of last year's funds, which includes our backfill for lost revenue from HERF. For our state categorical and restricted funds, we based our budget on the advanced apportionment um for all the ones that we received. If we didn't receive an actual notice, we did an estimate for that. Our education protection act funds, this is estimated at two point six four million, which is a hundred dollars for each of our FTES. And these expense are budgeted for um part-time faculty salaries and benefits. Our lottery revenue is estimated at four point four million, that's up from last year of four point one. And that's a hundred and fifty five dollars per FTES, that includes our non-residents as well for that one piece, we do get paid for our non-resident students. And our interest income is flat at two million dollars. And back in April, the board approved our basic aid allocations for this coming year, so you've seen these before, it's a total of ninety nine point five million. We have our long, long-term obligations for the OPEB and pension stabilization trusts. Forty eight million for our facilities master plan projects, we have two million for our special project support. And our annual contribution of three million for ADA projects. We have scheduled maintenance and renovation of seventeen million and then sixteen point five million for our district-wide technology priorities. Now I'm gonna walk you through the student-centered funding formula calculations. So there's three sections, this is the first two sections as seen here. In column A, those rates have increased by the state-funded COLA. And this first section is how the colleges are funded for our FTES, there's first off a basic allocation based on the size of each college. And then the credit and non-credit um and FTES is calculated based on those rates. That hundred and twenty six point five million represents about seventy five percent of the formula calculation. The second section is our supplemental allocation, that's for our students who receive PAL. Students who receive our California Promise waivers and the AB five forty students that also get waivers. So that twenty one point six million dollars represents about thirteen percent. And the last section is the success metrics, I don't expect you to be able to see all these tiny numbers, these these are a three-year average. Of our success, success metrics, we have improved. And that nineteen point five million for these is about twelve percent of the budget, it was only ten percent last year. So we are doing well in these success areas. And this is a summary of the calculation, the first line is the total of those three sections, so a hundred and sixty seven point five million. The next calculation, the the total twenty twenty one TCR plus COLA, so that's how they calculate the hold harmless. It's based on the seventeen eighteen funding plus COLA each year since then. So that hundred and seventy point one million is the max amount we would receive um through the hold harmless. So the difference between those two numbers is the two point six million that I alluded to earlier. And that is the amount, the hundred and seventy point one million that we are funding. Last year, we funded through the model a hundred and sixty six point five million, so that's an increase of about three point seven million. And now I'll walk you through the draft model calculations, the first line is that SCFF revenue from the last slide. Um, the next line is our non-resident tuition. And then we add in our district-wide local and state revenue. Some examples of local revenue are the leased ground lease revenue we get for the apartment complex and um some of the ground leases at ATIP. It's our interest revenue and the funds we get from our surplus sales. On the state revenue, we have things like our lottery, our EPA. We also get funds for hiring full-time faculty and supporting our part-time faculty, as well as mandated cost funds. So we add all those together, we have two hundred and one point five million dollars for revenue allocations. This is an eight million dollar increase, about four point two percent more than we had last year. The next um part of the model is where we add in the prior year beginning balance. Um, this is the district-wide balance, so it's what we had in contingency plus any excess revenues we received. That's the eighteen million gets distributed back out, and then we set our new reserve, which is fifteen point one million. We also cover our district-wide general expenses, those cover things like our district-wide IT maintenance agreements, our legal costs. Our property liability insurance, um and our internal and external audits. Um, and lastly, we fund our district service operations at nine point three four percent. So those um get deducted from the colleges and allocated to those other areas, leaving a net available funds. Of a hundred and eighty million for the colleges. So bringing forward those balance on that top line, we then add the local income. The biggest chunk of that is our pension stabilization funds to get reimbursed to each of those locations for our increased pension costs. And I know we'll talk about that a little more later. It also includes rental of facilities um and other operations contract services on campus. And then there's a small fee that we um provide to Saddleback for maintaining the facilities for district services. So that last middle line there, the total sources of funds. Um, looking at each location, Saddleback's an increase of five point one percent over last year. IVC increased by four point four percent. The district services increased three point six percent and our general expense increased seven point eight percent. So that total two hundred and thirty one point three million is a ten and a half million dollar increase from the prior year. And it's an overall four point seven percent increase. And the last piece is to add in the individual location any balances for each college and district services to get us our total allocated budget for the new year. Totally the two hundred and seventy one million. So some expenditure assumptions for our salaries, um we have not completed our negotiations yet, we're getting close, I think, but. Um, we have included any full-time faculty positions, any new hires, step-in column adjustments. And we did put some funds in holding accounts to cover our anticipated negotiated increases. The PERS rate is twenty two point nine one percent, STIRS is at sixteen point nine two percent. Um, I've seen low health and welfare benefit increases in the last few years, but this is the first time I think I've ever seen a zero percent increase. For our medical and dental and vision plans, so um we were very pleased with that renewal. The unemployment insurance side, very large increase, it's a small number, but it has historically for many, many years been point zero five percent. So you can see it's tenfold, it's point five percent this year, and that's because with the pandemic, the reserves for our state unemployment system were drained. And so they need to get those replenished. Our workers' compensation decreased slightly from one point three two to one point two six percent. And our property liability insurance is one point three million, that's up um a hundred thousand from the prior year. For reserves, as I said, we had a seven and a half percent of our unrestricted revenues, that's fifteen point one million. And for basic aid, we have a total of thirty two point six million, that's twenty percent of our excess property taxes. Based on the um BP and AR for basic aid, twenty point five million, and then we had a carryover of excess funds of twelve million dollars. Alright, so let's look at some of the adopted budget numbers. Again, I'll mostly focus on that top line or unrestricted general fund, so that carryover beginning balance of eighty five million dollars. We have revenues of three hundred and twenty eight million, expenditures of three hundred and thirty. So you can see we're showing a deficit of one point eight million, and those are planned spending down of beginning balances on one-time expenses. But we're really pretty flat, which is where we want to be, that's our target. And that would um net an any balance of eighty three million dollars. Um, some of the other note, capital outlay fund is one of our largest funds, and that's of course where we fund all of our big construction projects. Um, so we can see we started the year with three hundred and thirty five point five million, revenues of a hundred and fifty three. The biggest chunk of that, of course, is our basic aid funds that are allocated, but it also includes um some state funds. And then you see the big expenditures of four hundred and eighty seven million and a big deficit of three hundred and thirty four. And while that sounds like a big deficit, really, it's just that all of those funds are budgeted for projects, we don't expect to spend all of that money. All the projects cannot be completed in one fiscal year, but they are allocated and budgeted individually for those projects. And we again have our OPEB trust and pension stabilization trust fully funded. Alright, just a little breakdown of our revenues, um the unrestricted general fund, you can see the local revenues is where most of our money comes. Two hundred and fifty five million of that is our property tax revenue. And the other financing sources is that pension stabilization funds that get transferred in, as well as some of the lost revenue that we're getting from HERF. On the restricted general fund side, we have federal resources, the biggest number being, of course, our HERF money. But we also had our um NSF, National Science Foundation grants, the Perkins Grants. And our Hispanic serving institution grants. On the state side, we have many state funds this year, including our adult ed, our California Promise Funds. Our student equity and achievement funds and our strong workforce fund, so we, there's um twenty or thirty programs in there, but those are some of the large ones. On our capital outlay side, you can see the state revenues of fifty eight point eight million, so that is funding our um three projects. The two at Saddleback is our gateway and the science and math building, the fine arts complex at Irvine Valley College. And also about thirteen million in our scheduled maintenance funds that we're getting this year. Um, and then of course, the eighty three million and other financing sources for cap outlay is our transfer in of basic aid funds. On the expense side, um in our unrestricted general fund, we have two hundred and ten million for salaries and benefits. That, of course, is the biggest piece for us, um supplies and services at twenty three million, just a small amount of three hundred in cap outlay. And the ninety six million is all the transfers basically for basic aid. On our capital outlay side, you can see again that four hundred and eighty seven million dollars funded for all of our projects. In that total, there's two hundred and fourteen million that's set aside for Saddleback College projects. A hundred and sixty four million for Irvine Valley College projects, we have eight million for district services. And a hundred and three million on our district-wide projects. On the student financial aid, that fifty two million, um it's near the bottom, that's a thirteen million dollar increase year over year. Um, and that is money directly going to our students to help them, so I, that's mostly the HERF money again that we're seeing in lots of areas. On our district-wide any balance trend for the twenty twenty one, that's the fourth column over, you can see we were up a little. The majority of that is the HERF money that we received one time and the savings because we were not on campus and not traveling. And um having as many activities. And as we said earlier, for twenty one twenty two, we're expecting to remain basically flat. As and that's a plan to keep our bet revenue and expenses in alignment. Um, and here's our trend on revenue and expenses for twenty twenty one, you can see our salary accounts in the one thousands and two thousand lines. Academic and, oh, sorry, they don't show those numbers here, the academic salaries and classified salaries. Um, they were down a little bit, we didn't have as many hourly staff um on site this past year as we were working remote. Um, and we were a little slower in getting some of our recruitments done. And for the new year, our numbers again are fairly equal, we have our property tax increases. And again, we have our step-in column and negotiated salary increases that we're planning on. The benefit increases, um although our health and welfare remain flat, we still do have those increases in STIRS and PERS and unemployment. Right, next up is Corey Robin, he's gonna go over the saddleback slides.
Good evening, it's uh my privilege to uh present the Saddleback College budget to the board. So starting out with our FTS trends, um I'll just highlight uh the middle column there in twenty nineteen twenty, you see. Um, we increased our FTS by one point four percent to sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty four, which was good timing. Because in the next couple of years, um obviously, we're in COVID and we have an emergency allowance. That allows us to fund at that sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty four level, even though we have experienced, as you all know, drops in our enrollment. Down to sixteen thousand four twenty five in twenty twenty one. And then the twenty one twenty two is reflecting the the funding level. Um, current uh enrollment right now for fall twenty one shows that we're down just under ten percent in headcount. And seven percent in weekly student contact hours. So next slide. I could go on for hours on this slide, because there's a lot of numbers and it's been quite a volatile period with the. Going through a new funding formula in nineteen twenty and then obviously the pandemic in in the last year, year and a half. So it's been kind of a crazy time in terms of managing budgets, but I will um. Synthesize this down into two main points that I want to take away. Um, the first is, as Anne Marie said, um the last three years in particular have been very good budget years for for the college and and the district. Surprisingly, yeah, obviously, as I've indicated with with the changes that have occurred. The the positives that I want to leave you with is that through effective college and district leadership, revenues are up, expenses have been contained. Despite annual COLAs. And one time at local and restricted funds and cost savings have been added to our reserves to position the college for for the future. And to be able to make um significant future investments as I'll go into later. I mean, one of the things I want to highlight, the look back through our budget trends, the adopted budget in the past years. Um, if you looked, we we've gone from eight point seven million dollar projected deficit in eighteen nineteen to three point five million. In nineteen twenty to three million in twenty twenty one, and now in this budget, a two million dollar projected deficit for twenty one twenty two. So significant reductions in what we're budgeting and I I think we all know and we've seen in the actual numbers that are here. Every budget has some savings in it, um sometimes planned savings, sometimes um just the circumstances are around the year. We don't spend every dollar that we have budgeted, so yeah, two million dollar budget, I'm very satisfied with where we're at, given where we started. Which I'll go into it in a little bit. So the second thing that I wanted to emphasize is the importance of distinguishing between one-time and ongoing funding, so. Obviously, in nineteen twenty, twenty twenty one and twenty one twenty two, we have very extenuating circumstances. And nineteen twenty, we're able to add a significant amount of one-time local revenue. Along with some continuing, um and then twenty twenty one due to the pandemic, as um Kim mentioned. Yeah, there's a significant amount of here dollars, which I'll go into in the next slide, as well as a a lot of savings. And the ability to transfer some expenses in our regular operating budget to to the here funds, so. You see a significant amount of one-time um savings in there. But I want to highlight where we've come from, just so you get context, if you look at the seventeen eighteen. Um, numbers, the difference between the revenue there and the expenditure shows about a two million dollar deficit. So coming from there, and then we implemented the funding formula in nineteen twenty. And we are projecting about a five million dollar base revenue reduction, ongoing revenue reduction with the new formula, so. Yeah, the good, the last three years have been good in the sense that it's allowed us to build up some ongoing revenue. Um, take advantage of the one-time revenue and give gave us time to right-size our budget, so. Uh, if you look at the expense line, I'll just highlight, you know, with the exception of the other outgo in the twenty twenty one year. The expenditures have been fairly consistent, yeah, and again, that's that's a combination of being intentional about. Right-sizing our budget to address the the circumstances that we saw with what we what we had with the structural deficit. Um, so over that period of time, we we've held expenses in check, we utilize restricted revenues uh to the best that we could. To to maintain our expenditures uh at a pretty consistent level, even though annually we're we're experiencing cost of living increases. So go to the next slide. So here's a summary of the here funds, so you see we've received thirty two point eight million dollars, thirteen million of that was student aid funds. And nineteen point eight million was institutional. Um, with that, we, you can see the planned expenditures between what we've already expended or used. And what we plan to, about seven point seven million dollars in lost revenue. Salaries and benefits are broken down into a couple of categories, some was maintaining payroll for um employees. That were funded by revenue sources like the Child Development Center, community ed parking and and others like that. And then also um. Uh, public safety and pandemic response, so those categories would be our police safety and health services. And then the the other two big categories are services and equipment. And mostly in there is technology, screening, testing, um software maintenance agreements, um classroom technology. As well as laptops and Chromebooks for students. Um, next slide. So I've covered most of this, this is a summary of previous slides, I want to emphasize one bullet point in the first section. And that's our SCFF outcomes. Um, if you look at your cost of living increase in the last year was five, five percent on a state level, we we broke that out over the last two years. But um. We've we've increased our basic allocation by six percent, um the. we've, we've increased our basic allocation by 6%, the supplemental component by 11 and a half, 12%, and the success metrics by 17%. So you, so there's a significant reduction, 90% reduction on our hold harmless from 2.9 million in the 2021 budget, down to 286,000 in the 2122 budget. The next slide, I'll go over the investments for the future. So as we plan for our future, you know, as, as Anne Marie said, you know, we've, we've had healthy budgets where we're well positioned. And the goal with colleges to utilize those resources in these, primarily these three areas. We want to restore enrollment through outreach and new program development. Improve student success, equity and achievement by using our restricted funds, guided pathways, student equity and achievement, promise, HSI and strong workforce. And then enhanced facilities, technology and sustainability by creating a, a working and learning environment for our students that's attractive and draws, draws them back. Projects there include, in addition to the facilities master plan projects that Kim had mentioned in our, our basic aid funding, which includes PV projects, photovoltaic projects and infrastructure, but also landscaping and reducing water and maintenance in our landscaping. Redesign our quad, enhance the quad to create intentional learning spaces within the quad and student engagement spaces. There's greenhouses that are not in our facilities master plan that need to be repaired and or replaced. And then classroom AV and, and wifi and other projects there to enhance our technology. Challenges ahead, I think we're all familiar with that. Under COVID, we've had, as I mentioned, emergency enrollment protection for the last couple of years or this year and the, the budget year that we're planning. The end of the hold harmless, we've talked about in 2425. And then looking forward at increasing future costs, salaries and benefits. One thing I didn't mention is there's significant money that's coming in this current year budget, part of which is, is in the revenue section. And we've appropriated for salaries and benefits for full-time faculty and, and part-time faculty to increase our faculty obligation number. Utilities, as I mentioned, we're trying to maintain our facilities. So PV and investing in infrastructure costs and maintaining, becoming more efficient and sustainable is, is an important strategic priority. And then I'll conclude with this. Over the last few years, Saddleback has implemented practices that focus on maximizing its resources to achieve strategic goals, considering the long-term impact of, of resources. And, and the benefit of that or the outcome of that is not only have we improved our our success measures in the student-centered funding formula, but we've also lowered our costs. So it's been a, it's been a good few years to, to navigate, and I'm very pleased with where we are with our budget.
Debbie, did you let me just jump in here for a minute? President Milchker, I think you need to take a motion and a second to extend the meeting.
Oh, do I have a motion and a section to, to extend the meeting? So, trustee Jane made the motion. Do I have a second? Nobody wants to, I know. Just kidding. Until when?
Nine.
No, no.
We already go to nine.
9:30.
Oh, you're gonna be here.
Okay, thank you so much, trustee Jay. So trustee Jay has made a motion to extend the meeting until 10 because our usual ending, I mean, our proposed ending is nine o'clock, and trustee Inman seconded it. And I believe under the new board docs, we have to call the roll for every motion now. So, so Mayor and Secretary, can you please call the motion?
Trustee.
Call the roll, sorry.
Trustee. Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Milchker.
Hi.
Trustee Prandergast.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee McKeen.
Hi.
And now I, I believe Saddleback College, Debbie.
Thank you, President Milchker. For Irvine Valley College, I'll be brief because a lot of what I was gonna say has been covered, but the first slide you see is our FTS trend for residents FTS for the last few years. What I would highlight on this slide is that the 2021 actual was about 1% decline compared to 1920, which is a good position to be in, given the pandemic situation. What's not showing, shown on this slide is the non-resident FTS. That one we did take a hit, especially in the international student population where enrollment declined about 35% due to the COVID situation, you know, travel restrictions and courses being offered online. And you'll see that coming up in the upcoming slides as well. On the next slide, revenues and expenditures. Again, a lot of this has been covered. We have savings this year because of the campus closures and one thing I want to highlight for 2122, I'd like to mention that we are, you know, we've hired five faculty, new faculty members this year in accounting, chemistry, two in ESL, and one in ethnic studies. So we're happy about that. On the next slide, we have HERF actual for 20, as of July 31st, 2021, and the planned expenditures. And again, categories are very similar. The biggest category is, of course, student aid. We're about halfway through that student aid line, about 6.4 million spent this year for last year and 6.8 million planned for the next year. I want to highlight also the line where you see enrollment, 2.7 million of that, 4.6 million is the backfill for reduction in our, our non-resident tuition due to the decline in international, international student enrollment. So that is a good, we use that we have the HERF funds to be able to backfill the revenues caused by enrollment declines in that area. Also want to mention the public safety salaries because of the parking revenues. And, you know, now being charged parking fee, we did experience decline there and we're able to backfill the that revenue through salary or payroll continuation, as you can see under the expenses, the salaries line that represents mostly the public safety salaries and then the benefits that are associated with that as well. And then, of course, Chromebooks, laptops, technology. We, you know, invested a lot in technology during the pandemic to ensure that our students, faculty and staff are, are able to work and learn remotely. And on the next slide, regarding budget planning, we are focused on making sure that long-term revenues and expenditures are aligned. We do project long-term by '23, '24, that the ending balances will decline gradually because the HERF funding will expire by May of 2022. And also a lot of the savings that we've experienced during the campus closures will, are not projected to continue once we fully reopen. And then, of course, others, Corey and Kim both mentioned that the whole homeless provision goes away in '24, '25, so we're keeping an eye on that as well as we try to right, right-size over the course of the next few years. Thanks to all the enrollment challenges or changes ahead. And lastly, for the developments and budget principles, we are paying a very close attention to what's called efficiency or productivity, which is a weekly student contact hour per full-time enrolled student. This last year, it dipped a little bit. We were at 487. Our, you know, the gold standard is of course, 525. We did soften that a little bit just to be able to protect capstone programs and enrollment. And for '21, '22, that number is planned or targeted rather would be at 485. And, you know, positions being 90 to 92% of our, of our budget, we are paying an extra close attention to vacant positions. Every single position is being reviewed in order to make sure that it's still viable and needed and resources if still could not be shifted to a different area of the campus. And lastly on this page, the utilization of restricted slash categorical funds were possible in order to preserve other funds, unrestricted funds for other areas of campus where those kind of funds are unavailable. And with that, I would turn it back to Kim.
Great, thank you, Debbie. All right, so this is our district services, revenue and expense trend. A lot of the same comments that Debbie and Corey made. Our local revenue was really just the pension stabilization reimbursement for persons stirs. We did allocate some one-time funds for 2021 for special projects, but due to the pandemic, we were unable to do most of them. So those funds have all carried over on top of some new projects that I'll mention on the next slide. So we as well look at all of our vacant positions and try to reorganize our departments where appropriate to best utilize the, the resources that we have. We've allocated 650,000 of our ending balance for one-time purposes. We're doing some work in our warehouses by installing new automatic roll-up doors and swamp coolers to take care of those employees out there. We're doing an audiovisual refresh of the Board of Trustees' conference room, implementing electronic sabbatical process. That's still one of our few processes in HR, I think, that's on paper. And, and we're going to be updating our fixed asset inventory system and upgrading SharePoint, which we use district-wide for all of our committees. So just some overall budget trends. And we still do not have stakeholder and growth funds that are adequate to keep up with all of our increased personnel costs and other discretionary costs. District-wide or personnel costs are make up an average of 89.7% of our budget. This is excluding our reserves and our basic aid funds. And that's an increase from last year. What we spent was 89.2%. Stirs and pirs continue to increase and we'll have a slide on that. So even though we have the pension stabilization fund, we do have to use resources to help fund that from our basic aid. And of course, with salaries, we always will have our ongoing negotiated increases, the step and column movement every year, and we have stipends and other additional payments. So here's our, our slide on our persons stirs rates. In the green bars for stirs, you can see this year it went up to 16.92%. It's projected to go up to 19.1, which is the statutory maximum. And it's in law right now, so that's gonna stay at 19.1 maximum through '24, '25, unless something changes in the legislature. The pirs rate is analyzed each year and those projections have it going up to 27.7% in '24, '25. So in these 10 years, we went from 11.2 million to 26.4 million by '24, '25, and that's a $15 million increase each year. So we are gonna need to continue to put those funds aside into that stabilization fund. Looking ahead, we monitor the state economy and our property tax trends very closely and assess the impact to South Orange County. We continue to pursue our tenants at HUP. I think we've got some things moving on that. Evaluating our long-term impact of COVID. We do need to finalize our technology master plan. I think we're well on the way to getting that done soon. And of course, monitoring all of our FTS. At this point, we're ready to take questions.
Yeah, so are there any questions, trustee Jay?
Thank you, thank you so much, all of you, for such an excellent presentation. Very, very good. Thank you. No question.
Okay, any other questions? Um, trustee Prandergast?
Yeah, so again, good presentations. I appreciate the the detail, but I, I, I know this is a Dave Lang-esque type question. I honor him for the planting these seeds in my brain for all the years he was on the board. We spend a lot of money on new buildings and we've had to spend a lot of money on buildings that went into disrepair. And I don't really see a whole lot for maintenance in any of the budgets, district or colleges, and that concerns me. And, and if, if we're counting capital outlay as what used to be called deferred maintenance in the past, seeing that those spendings have gone down and even at the rates they're at, they're very low, I'm concerned for our future. I just want to know what the logic or reasoning behind that might be.
I will take a stab at that. And then if Corey and Debbie, if you guys want to add in. You know, I think the last couple of years, or maybe at least definitely the last two years, we have focused on providing funding for scheduled maintenance and renovation projects, which wasn't there before. And if you recall, in our facilities master plan, we actually put a line item in there for both colleges to fund scheduled maintenance projects each year so that we could keep up with it and not let the campuses get into the disrepair that they have in the past.
So is that not reflected in these budgets yet?
That's part of the basic aid allocation.
Okay.
Of what we provided. So we had scheduled maintenance and renovation projects of 17 million that we funded in the current fiscal year. And that's on top of the 13 million that we're getting from the state for scheduled maintenance projects. So we have $30 million this current fiscal year for scheduled maintenance projects that we can start on. And then we would have a couple of years to spend that. But our plan is to fund the projects as needed. Both of the campuses, IVC has kind of completed their analysis of what they need on an ongoing basis to re-roof and to re-carpet and to repaint and to maintain the HVAC systems. And so we're funding their plan. Saddleback College is in the midst of finalizing their plan, but we're kind of doing the same thing is we want to get those plans. So that way we will fund it each year with the kick requests through the basic aid projects.
So on the revenue expenditure trend, capital outlay spending
So that.
Is like 900,000 at the highest and 199 at the lowest, which you're talking millions and we're spending thousands. I'm, I'm lost.
On that revenue and expenditure trend, that's the unrestricted general fund. And all of our scheduled maintenance money is moved to our capital outlay fund and spent out of the capital outlay. So you're not seeing it on that trend because it's a capital outlay fund.
So even though there's a capital outlay line item on this, it's a different capital outlay.
That capital outlay is for equipment purchases that we use just day-to-day.
Okay.
Your desks and your chairs and anything that's deemed.
So long story short, we can be, we can be assured that we are taking care of our buildings better than we have when I came on the board and Jim had to walk me through the science math building in a rainstorm.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and you've seen some of it happen. When you were on the tour, they were doing that maintenance.
But even some of that was like, this building's 30 years old and we're just now fit, you know, touching it up. And it's like, okay, can we get on a better track with that is I think where I'm at.
I hope that we are. We have that plan in place. And like I said, it is part of our kick process that every year we're scheduled maintenance. Master plan and the facilities master plan was fully funded. That was part of it.
Okay.
I would just say absolutely. I mean, when I got here, we're dealing with leaks in a number of buildings. That was number one priority was keeping the water out of the building. So we've dealt with the urgent stuff, but we, we are in the process of catching up with our planning for yeah, various systems, HVAC and all the other things that we need, need to maintain. We have an infrastructure, part of the, you know, we did, we did do a study of our infrastructure, so that was part of our facilities master plan. So that's, that's part of that funding that we're allocating is to address some of the infrastructure. And as you know, you know, the priorities on the buildings that we've got in our facilities master plan are, are those buildings like science math that what was leaking and, you know, are, are in most disrepair. So hopefully in the next few years, we're gonna have addressed.
But I mean, we have an example of it on tonight's agenda with the Library Resource Center. It's 50-year-old building and we're just now deciding to fix the concrete. But those kinds of things, that can't continue to happen if we want to maintain safety and, and the high standards we expect.
I agree with you.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So when I do get to go to sleep tonight at 11 o'clock, I can sleep well.
And, and when you said you walked through the science math building in the rain, you meant the rain was inside the building. I know. Absolutely. Okay.
It was also.
And, and.
It rained in my office here on the third floor, but it doesn't rain in my office anymore.
Yeah. Oh, yay.
That was, that was.
Yeah, and, and, and years ago, years ago.
That's right.
Years ago, I was taken on tours of where the nurses were in, in the temporary building and there were rats running around and it was leaking. Years ago, I was taken on tours of where the nurses were in the temporary building, and there were rats running around, and it was leaking. And the worst thing was IT where it was leaking and it was dangerous and it was not protected. And that was the most, those nursing and the IT were the biggest emergencies to get fixed up. And we did, we got them fixed up. So that was great. Okay. Trustee.
Jamal, I'll try to be brief. Thank you for that extremely detailed presentation. I noticed a pretty large spike in other operating expenses. Is that related to, are those COVID-related, or is it something else?
It could be some of the, are you talking about the budget or the actual? So on the budget, you would
Well, let's see, what was I talking about?
Yes.
Friends.
From actual to budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, that's a lot of that.
It's a 214.
Because in 2021, we had so much savings due to being shut down. And that's where, you know, Kim mentioned, we weren't doing the travel. Now, we don't spend that much travel, but we do spend considerable mountain travel as well as all the activities that we do. You know, a lot of that was not occurring. We weren't having as many speakers come into the classes. We weren't, you know, we just weren't doing the things that we normally do. So that's where the budget is spiked in the other operating expenses and services. Is kind of getting the budgets back up to closer, being more closer to normal with a little bit of spike in that. Now, Devi and Corey and Kim, is there any one thing in particular that you guys have budgeted in those line items?
Yeah, it looks like in all IVC, Salabac and both had are projecting significant increases.
Kind of use for I don't want to say contingency, but it's where we set aside money in order to be able to fund the districts or to fund any needs to come up. The campuses kind of have set aside to rather than pulling from their contingency accounts. They do put some money in the budgets in the 5,000s that they have available to be able to allocate out if things come up that they need to allocate.
Yeah, absolutely. Those are the two things. If you're comparing 2021 to 2122, it's it's the cost savings and the other operating costs and things that were moved into here for 2021. Comparing that to 2122 is having a normal budget. Plus, as Anne Marie said, that's where we do budget our, you know, that they are contingency for us, you know, as things come up, you know, we want to be able to fund it. So I keep that in one specific location.
So I know I asked you this last time when this was a draft, and now that we're about to adopt it, I'll ask you again. So it's music to our ears when you say this is a good budget and we're in a good place. I think we're all happy to hear that. But I'm still seeing deficits. So tell me why we should not be concerned on the deficits we see in this budget.
So it's a it's a $1.8 million deficit for the unrestricted general fund. And that's planned expenditures of spending down our one-time money that we had. And so we're really planning to do that. And so, you know, 1.8 million, when you're looking at a free $330 million budget, that's pretty flat. It is a slight deficit, but I think it's nothing to be concerned about. It's planned expenditures. It's, I don't think you're going to see ongoing deficits. And even if we did have an ongoing deficit of 100 or 1.8 million dollars, you know, we could go quite a few years.
So we don't have any, we don't have any charge to show a balanced budget? We are allowed to show a deficit budget?
We have a balanced budget because you're allowed to use your beginning balance, revenues, minus your expenditures. And that's where we do have the balance budget. So since it's a planned spend down of our reserves, it's appropriate.
Okay, so even if we go into the reserves, we're still at the percentage we we
Yes, we have.
Or what to be.
Yes. You look at, you know, our reserves district-wide is 25%. So we have our seven and a half percent economic uncertainty reserve.
I see that. I guess I, and then so that just last question, knowing to move on is I mean, you're confident that I know we're relying on, you know, strong property taxes for years to come. That's certainly the basis for why we're here today for the most part. But anything else we should think about internally going forward? I know the colleges talked about trends, new programs, new outreach. But there's no real budget attached to those. Is there anything else we should continue to look at going forward?
You know, with us being the basic aid district, I think the property taxes of our budget. And so that is something that we need to watch. I think fortunately, we are in Orange County and it's a growing area. And it's not an overly matured area to where the property tax values continue to increase as well as their fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you want to look at it, there's still land available to where they're going to be building new tracks. That's going to add more success value to the county. All those things work in our favor. Even during the pandemic, you know, the county really didn't see a huge significant drop-off on people paying their property taxes. So it was pretty even with that, whereas some counties you saw a much larger decline in the property taxes. I think working, you know, ATUP is starting to look more promising.
Absolutely.
Where we're getting some tenants in there that's going to be a long-term revenue stream for us. So I think that's good. I think really the important thing is we need to figure out, each of the colleges need to figure out what size college is the right size college for them. I'm concerned, I don't know that we'll ever get back to our pre-pandemic enrollment levels. And so that means even though we're being funded at the higher levels right now, what is that level that we should be? And what does that make the college look like? And what are we going to have to do in order to live within that side of the college?
And I think the other thing you need to consider is international students, which was a significant part of IVC's budget. And due to everything that's happened, you know, that's a very complicated situation. And so all of the international non-resident tuition and so forth, that's that's really something that has to be looked at and worked on.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, those are those are excellent questions, excellent questions and excellent comments. And you know, it's it's important for the board to do ongoing planning for these these things. And so my question is, go ahead.
I have a question.
It's, I could go on, but I won't right now. My question is, as Devi said, the hold harmless for the new student center funding formula is going to expire in 2425. I was just wondering how we as a district are doing on the new student seventh centered form funding formula compared to the old funding formula that we had previous to this adoption of this new funding formula by the state.
So I think, you know, in looking at our revenues, our revenues have continued to increase. And we have decreased our whole harmless amount. Decreased the whole harmless amount.
Okay, yeah.
You know, I hope when we get to 2425, we'll basically be even, and we won't need the whole harmless anymore.
Then it'll be just, just, just a wash then.
Right, then it should be a wash.
Compared. And another thing from what you were saying, it's true that the K-12 moment is going way down in the whole area. So so these students, our traditional community college students, they're 18 years old. That that population is dropping. So we have to be more creative and in getting displaced workers, a lot of different areas that we can make make sure that we can maintain our programs to serve all the students, the 18-year-olds and all the students. So I agree with that. Any other questions?
A lot of the programs that we have underway as well, I think what Ray Dell mentioned, AB705
Yeah.
Earlier, you know, if you implement AB705 successfully, you're going to have fewer students because your students aren't going to spend as many years in the
I mentioned it too, in the remedial classes, right?
Right. So you know, that's going to put pressure.
And they and they did it, and they did it. They implemented AB705 just for that very reason. They wanted the students to get through more rapidly, you know, so.
You know, our guided pathways initiative, that's another initiative that you want to get the students in, you want to get them on the right path, you want to get to get them to transfer, get their degree quicker than they have been.
Yeah.
So all of those things that we're doing for the betterment of the students puts pressure on the number of students that we serve and ultimately kind of decreases the number of students.
Yeah, because we're spending more per student, right? What do you think? Trustee, what, Ray Dell?
Just quickly, I just want to ask that the district, that the departments really keep us up to date in the breast, even in advance, if we have concerns, international students or whatever the issue is that we are, that just keep us informed on all of this. Yes, it's important.
Any other questions?
Just one thing I wanted to say, a lot of families are leaving Orange County. It's so expensive to live here. They're going to other states and taking their kids with them. And so eventually the enrollment will go down.
That's true, too. Absolutely. So this excellent report, and it was interesting in the board agenda online and also the the presentation. So thank you, Vice Chancellors Gable and Kim McCord and Corey Wathan and David Cattaprian. So now we will now move to public comments. Are there any public comments on this, on the budget prior to us adopting the the budget for the upcoming year?
We have not received any public comments.
Okay. Vice Chancellor Gables. It's probably not important. Does the staff have any responses to the public comments, including any written comments received prior to or during the meeting?
There were none. So now we have none. I would like to publicly thank Kim, Devi, and Corey for all of their work that went into the budget. It's a tremendous effort at the end of the fiscal year. And so I truly appreciate your hard work on it.
Yeah, we've got an excellent fiscal staff. We really do. Great. So thank you so much. Thank you all. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any further discussion by the Board of Trustees? Okay, item 5.1 is concluded. We will now vote on this item, on item 5.2, which will adopt the bus budget for the fiscal year 2122. Okay, please, who said that?
I'm right.
And I second. Trustee Wright said that, and trustee Jay seconded it. And can you please call the enrollment secretary?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchick.
Hi.
Trustee Prendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Student trustee Matee.
Hi. Okay, the next section is the Board of Trustees and the chancellor. And the first is the trustee, Board of Trustees meeting minutes.
Don't move.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We have a motion from trustee Jamal in a second from trustee Whit Ray Dell. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchick.
Hi.
Trustee Prendergast.
All right.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Matee.
Hi. Okay, next, next we have the trustee request for attending conferences, and there was a conference in San Diego, an ACCP conference. Do we have a motion in a second? So trustees, if they're interested in attending, can now attend if we pass this.
Really? Pass if nobody wants to go? I think it's just.
Someone may change their mind.
Yeah, if so, nobody, nobody has signed up to go yet, but if someone decides to go, then we have, we have to have it. We have to make a motion. We have to, by so move.
It's a new way to do it.
Well, the the mechanism.
Trustee Jay seconded. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchick.
Hi.
Trustee Prendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Student trustee Matee.
Hi.
It's it's almost 3, 300, 3,000 bucks, 3,000.
There's still, it's it's in October. They're not sure if it'll be, you know. I'm going to spend $3,000 to go to San Diego. I don't. That was off the record.
Hotel and we're on the record.
We're on the, yeah, we're on the record. Okay. Okay, so now the the it will be unanimous. And the next is the consent calendar. Do we have any items that board members want to remove from the consent calendar?
Yes.
Trustee Jay?
9.7.
9.7.
Oh. Move the balance of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Prendergast made the motion and trustee Wright seconded it for the balance of the consent calendar. Madam Secretary, can you call the call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchick.
Hi.
Trustee Prendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Matee.
Hi. Trustee Jay, you wanted to talk about item?
Yes. It's an exhibit B, and it's number nine. And it says amendment number one, to extend the contract term by one year to provide board docs pro plus annual license through June 30th, 2020 in a change order of $17,000 and over $17,000. I wanted to know, we were told that board docs was already paid for. And then also, what if we don't, we were told we could have a choice after using board docs? What if we want to go back to the other, what is it, Granias?
Granias.
Granias. Why are we paying $17,500 more?
For the year. That's that's for the next year. $17,000 a year.
Oh, have we already, you told us we'd already paid for it?
Because we've been
Paid for 2020.
Right, 2021. So this is for 2122. So staff has been working on it that whole year, and we've actually been paying for both board docs and Granicus while we were doing the implementation. So this is for the first full year of board doc implementation, or first actually using it as the as the software for the board meetings. And I had asked because the staff has spent an incredible amount of time learning it, that we have the full year from the date it was implemented, which was just last month.
Yeah, okay. What if we decide we want to go back to Granias?
Well, that is ultimately the board's decision.
Because I myself like the other Granias better, a lot better. Okay. So we have to have it for a year, pay for a year.
To extend for a year, to extend the contract. And then to do Granicus, again, we'd have to talk about that to bring all of that back.
Granus, this is about $54,000 a year for licensing, whereas this is 17,500. That's a significant.
Is this just for the 17,500? Is it for the whole year?
Yeah, for the whole year.
Okay.
Might want to get used to it.
Yeah.
I mean, I liked a lot of things about Granicus better, but it, you know, the price difference. Well, I mean, it's, I'm fine with it, the board docs. I think a lot of things about Granicus I like better, but it's fine. I think it.
Ultimately, you got to remember, it makes their job easier.
No, no, I I get that. I mean, I know.
Your opinion, what? Your opinion, what?
Bobby.
I mean, from what I understood.
It's not just their time. The, the whole construction of the board agenda is more distributed now. And so that, that puts less pressure throughout the system in building agenda.
A lot of nonprofit organizations have switched, have gone to Board Docs. It's affordable. You know, I mean, it's not a Cadillac. I mean, that's for sure. It's fine.
Granus.
If it make, you know, it makes their job easier. Of course, I, I care about that. You know, but I think, Bobby, I think it's going to be hard to reverse this at this point. You can make a motion.
I, I just want to know why we've had Board Docs for a whole year. We saw it for the first time last month.
That was all of the training and getting it all set up and setting it.
Okay.
So that was all part of that.
Okay.
And we still don't know what it's going to look like when we have our monitors and stuff back and we go back to normal on that aspect.
Yeah, but we, you're right. For Docs, you have to call the roll every time. And Granus, we could just do it automatically. You didn't have to call the roll.
We've been on Zoom.
Yeah, we've. Ever since we've been on Zoom.
When we get our systems back, we'll be able to vote.
They said from now on, Board Docs, you have to call the roll.
Oh, you still have to call.
I was surprised at too.
Yeah, you need to, you need to pay more attention. I'm just kidding.
I didn't know.
It did come up tonight already.
It actually does have a, you know, it wouldn't be the same with Granus. There is a method for doing it, but that takes a little bit more work. We want to get you used to this first.
Bobby, I really think we need one more year to deal with this. I mean, it's been one year. I agree with you. I'm comfortable with Granus. I mean, I think we all are. The savings is important to me. So let's try it. I mean, I'm, I want to do a team job on this. So I think we all should be on the same page and, and go for it a good another year and see how that works. I'm appreciative to the staff who has worked so hard to put this all together. It's been an extra burden on them. So, let's just go from there.
You can make any motion you want.
Yes. Sorry, didn't talk for you.
I move that we continue with Board Docs for six months, Bobby.
Let's go eight. No.
I mean, it's one of your contracts.
It's a one. Go, go. Well, I'm not going to hold for it, so.
So then you can, you should make the motion if you know.
I move that we pass 9.7.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a sec? Yeah, okay. So trustee Prendergast makes the motion and trustee Inman seconds it. And I'm going to vote for it because we're already at a roll with the, with the new program. So we're going to try for another year and see how it works. So, sorry, Bobby. Okay.
Okay.
Same with you, actually. Okay, Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
No.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchiker.
Hi.
Trustee Prendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Student trustee Matty.
Hi.
For you. Okay, and now, now we're going to Business Service General Action Items. The first one is the ATAP Action and Options Agreement with the Vantec Corporation for ATAP, which is an exciting possibility. Do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion. There a second?
Second.
Second for trustee Prendergast. Are there any comments or questions? We already discussed this in close session. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Hi.
Trustee Prendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Student trustee Matty.
Hi.
And the next one is, this is a really exciting one. So it's, we're, we're authorized to enter into a donation agreement for Saddleback College Stadium VIP Suite naming rights. The president of our foundation, Anthony Ferry, he and his wife, Anthony and Carrie Ferry, are paying $400,000 for the naming rights to name the stadium VIP suite as the Ferry Family Suite. So we're delighted for this donation for, for the Irvine Valley, for the Saddleback College, beautiful new Saddleback College Stadium. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Trustee Jay seconded and then trustee Whit Raydell seconded it.
I do.
Are there any comments?
Trustee Wright seconded.
Oh, trustee Wright has a question?
No, he seconded it.
Seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Wright seconded it. Sorry. So trustee Jay made the motion. Trustee Wright seconded it. Are there any comments or questions or?
Yeah, I just want to thank Anthony and Carrie for this donation, for stepping up. We have long sought naming rights for something here at Saddleback College. And I really commend him for putting his money where his mouth is as the leader of the foundation for making this contribution into the college and the foundation staff for working with Anthony and his wife to make this happen.
Great, excellent, excellent comments. And Anthony talks about how when he was a student at Saddleback College, it's changed his life. And that's why he put so much time and effort and money into helping Saddleback College. So we really thank him a lot. So, so could we, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchiker.
Hi.
Trustee Prendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Student trustee Matty.
Hi.
And, and next is item 10.3, and this is the.
So moved.
Okay. Exterior concrete repairs for the Learning Resources Building. So trustee Jamal makes the motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
Trustee Jay seconded it. This exterior building repairs for the Learning Resource Center. So madam, are there any comments? Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchiker.
Hi.
Trustee Prendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Student trustee Matty.
Hi.
Okay, and, and the next one is item 11.1, which is Academic Employee and Classified Administrative Personnel Actions. And it, Vice Chancellor Viscacho, are there any changes on the academic employee?
Yes, we have one change and one readout. The change is on 11.1A1B. The position that you're approving tonight for Aaron Pollard, it was approved by the board. This position on June 2nd, 2020, not 2021. So we need to change 2021 to 2020. And then the readout is in compliance with our legal requirement, reading out the terms of the contract the board will be voting on tonight. That is for the new position of Director of Extended Opportunity Programs and Services, EOPS, at Irvine Valley College. The employee that's been hired is Dr. Rosa Prado. Her contract dates are August 23rd, 2021 through June 30th, 2023. Range 15 step seven, annual salary 148,128. Transportation 250 and a cellular phone 165. Thank you.
Thank you. We need a motion in a second.
I'll move.
Okay, trustee Prendergast made the, trustee Wright seconded it. Can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchiker.
Hi.
Trustee Prendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Student trustee Matty.
Hi.
And I have to mention some very long-serving employees who are retiring. Elizabeth Zipris is retiring from counseling after 16 years. Scott Fear is, is retiring as a chemistry instructor after 28 years. And I attended his ceremony when he got the Teacher of the Year Award.
He, he, he has 29. He's going to have 29 years because he was hired in 1993.
29 years. Excellent. Okay, 29 years. Okay, thank you. And he was named the Teacher of the Year and, and.
Yes.
When we went to his, the ceremony where they named him Teacher of the Year, he emailed me back that it was nice to have a fellow scientist on the Board of Trustees. And now he has two. Trustee Wright and myself. Oh, and trustee Whit Raydell, I guess. And then James Lowry, the Associate Director of Applications, has been here for 17 years. So we thank all these people for their many years of service for the district. Okay, the next one is Classified Personnel Actions, item 11.
Let me just say about Scott Fear. He had.
I love him. Wonderful teacher.
He is a wonderful teacher.
Yeah.
In chemistry, he has really done a well job.
Yes, he's an excellent teacher.
He is.
The area. I know when, when trustee Wright was dean, he knew who the good teachers are. And he was, he was a really fabulous teacher. So I hate to see him retire, actually. But anyway.
But it's 29, 29 years.
10 years. Thank you. And then 11.2 Classified Personnel Actions. So are there any changes or additions?
There are changes. Thank you.
I'll just mention a few other people. Leanne Bean has been serving for 11 years, six months. A plant engineer, Alan Cherry, served 25 years. And Ruben Floridas, an HVIAC technician, has served 23 years. So thank all of these people for their many years of service. Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
So moved. Trustee Jay, trustee Wright a second. Thank you. Can you please call the roll, Madam Secretary?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchiker.
Hi.
Trustee Prendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Trustee Matty.
Hi.
Okay, then the next, next is item 11.3 Non-Bargaining Unit Personnel. Are there any changes or additions, Vice Chancellor Viscacho?
No changes. Thank you, President Melchiker.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Okay, so trustee Jay and trustee Wright, trustee Jay made the motion. Trustee Wright seconded it. Can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchiker.
Hi.
Trustee Prendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Student trustee Matty.
Hi.
Okay, item 7.11.4 are, are agreements with CSCA Faculty Association and the Police Association. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Trustee Inman made, made the motion. Is there a second?
I second it.
And trustee Jay seconded it. So can you, is there any questions or comments? Can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchiker.
Hi.
Trustee Prendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Student trustee Matty.
Hi.
And next, 11.5, the Faculty Association Tentative Agreement. Are there any questions? Yes? Is there a second? Is there, are there any changes?
No, she wants to say something.
She wants to say something.
Vice Chancellor Viscacho, can you bring her back? Okay.
Sorry, Cindy.
Sorry, I, I just wanted to publicly thank. The chief negotiator for the Faculty Association is Claire Cesario. This is her first time serving as chief negotiator. Wanted to thank Claire, her team, and the Faculty Association President Louis Long and the work of the district team. There's a lot of work that went into this, these tentative agreements. And I just wanted to publicly thank those folks. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you.
I so moved.
If trustee Inman made the motion, trustee Jay seconded it. So Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Hi.
Trustee Jay.
Hi.
Trustee Jamal.
Hi.
Trustee Melchiker.
Hi.
Trustee Prendergast.
Hi.
Trustee Ray Dell.
Hi.
Trustee Wright.
Hi.
Student trustee Matty.
Okay, and next we have information items. So I'll just read them. If there's any comments, just raise your hand or some. Was there some reason here?
I didn't hear her. She was on mute, but she said, "I."
Okay.
She's not in my head.
Okay. Sorry. I'll just read, read these reports off quickly. There's 13.1 Staff Response to Public Comments, 13.2 Facilities Plan Status Reports. And these are on there because it's the end of the fiscal year. I mean, that's why they're here. And so 3.2 Facilities Plan Status Report, 13.3 Basic Aid Report, 13.4 Purfunds Monthly Summary. These are the money we get from the federal government. 13.5 COVID-19 Lock Grant, 13.6 Quarterly Investment Report, 13.7 Retiree OPEB Trust Funds, and we're doing well with that, 13.8 Pension Stabilization Trust Funds. And then the written reports from administrators. And so we have written reports from the chancellor and from the presidents of Saddleback and Irvine Valley College. But I'll ask all of them if they want to say something. In addition to that, chancellor, would you like to say something?
I, yes, in the interest of time, I will just say welcome back to the new academic year.
Okay, thank you. Good, good concept. Thank you. Okay, IVC President John Hernandez, President Hernandez, Dr. Hernandez.
Thank you, President Melchiker. As many of you know, one of the original faculty member of IVC, Joseph Buddy Ryan, passed away at the end of July. He taught at IVC for over 25 years in real estate and entrepreneurship. And I just want to extend my heartfelt sympathies and condolences to the Ryan family.
Thank you, thank you. And President Dr. Elliot Stewart?
And very quickly for me as well, good evening, everybody. First, for trustee Jamal, you're right, the inaugural game at our new stadium did not make it into the board report, obviously. So I can tell you a little bit about that. Santa Margarita was victorious over San Juan Hills. More importantly, they were very pleased with what we hope will be their new home for a long time. Things went pretty flawlessly. They did run out of food because they don't count their student tickets toward the count. So it's very hard for a food vendor to figure out what their needs are, but we'll do better at that next time. They were very pleased overall, and we look forward to talking to them, maybe about some sort of reciprocal agreement where we could let their football team into our games and vice versa. One other thing you all mentioned and embraced Liz McCann and her team